Try the link because they're starting the meeting now.
This is a meeting of the Stoughton Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, May 5, 2020. The meeting will come to order. Method to LinkedIn if you'd like to join in and participate in the meeting through your computer, through a Google links, a Google Meet link, and also by telephone. This meeting is also being live streamed over the Stoughton Media Access website, and it is being broadcast over local community cable. So let me start. Hopefully this can work if anyone in the audience wishes to. This is citizens' request time. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, do we do the pledge of allegiance first?
Oh, thank you. Mr. McCrisky. Mr. McCrisky has a flag in his office, so Joe Kittle lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I note for everybody, this flag was given to me by Congressman Joe Mokley in a small presentation that said it's been in my office for years now, so remembering Congressman Mokley as well. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, the wish to stand one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Can we put some requests to make at this time? I'm watching the microphones on my screen. If you'd like to speak, please turn on your microphone, and if it turns green, they'll recognize you. I don't see anyone who's activated the microphone to speak.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Who are you?
Deborah Roberts, Precinct 6. Hi, how are you? My question is, a couple of Board of Selectmen meetings ago, we had a meeting to talk about protocols, to have our virtual meetings. Are you ever going to publicize those steps and how you have to raise your hand if you want to speak? And we're going to use Google Meets and all other of the type of criteria for the standing and the ad hoc committees.
Yeah, I'll try to get to that over the weekend. I've been kind of swamped, but I'll try to speak like that.
I can understand that.
And set up another one of these. What I think I'm referring to are some or open Google Meets meetings with members of boards and committees, not to discuss any business, just to go over format, how we run these, what people observe and ways to make it better. And we came up with some techniques we're all trying, so that if you're, and the goal is to have all of the boards and committees up and running and functioning, even in a virtual world. No matter who you're appointed by, whether the town manager or the Board of Selectmen, and I mean what your charge is, because we're going to be in this predicament with the virus for some time, and we, I think the consensus from the two calls we had was we can't let the town be a victim of the virus, and we have work to do. So I'm going to try to get another one of those roundtables together for next week. If you would like to participate in that, send me an email, and I'll add you to the list of people to join in. Anybody else? All right, so moving ahead, announcements regarding board meetings during COVID-19. That was it. We'll have another roundtable. There are some boards and committees that haven't met at all. So what would be very helpful to do is to hear from members of those boards and committees on reasons, if there are any, for why you haven't been able to meet, particularly if we can get you some technical support to meet. And also for town meeting committees, if they're a member of town meeting standing committees, would need some help from town staff to get meetings up and running, please join in on the meeting. We don't have everybody's email address. So if you are a member of town meeting or any town board committee, please make sure we have a current good email address, and you can send that to us. The address is volunteers@stoughton-chov. Tonight, we're missing Michael Sullivan. Michael and Abby had wonderful news last week, a new baby boy that's his number five. I don't know why, but Michael has other things that he has to take care of tonight. Of course, we all wish Michael and Abby and the entire family well, and somehow that they get sleep. Other Selectmen's comments. Mr. McCrisky?
No comments, sir.
Mr. Kayvey?
Yeah, a few comments. So I'm just going to actually start off by just please reminding people, if you're not currently speaking, to have your mics on mute. Running these meetings is difficult because typically there'd be some protocol for requesting the floor, and right now shuffling your papers or taking a sip out of your coffee is essentially making you, you know, the subject of the meeting. So if you're not speaking, it's important. Just otherwise, these meetings become very chaotic. That we just, for good hygiene, good meeting hygiene, we're on mute when we're not speaking. Beyond that, I'd also like to congratulate Selectman Solomon, his wife, his family for number five. It's outstanding, always great news, and looking forward to seeing them, and wishing them well and good health. At the very last, just for everyone, I'd just like to wish you all good health. You know, I know we've been going through a lot together, separately, but together. And I think we're doing good work. You know, a lot of our success is gauged by the capacities of our hospitals and their ability to treat patients when they have them. So from all that I've heard, we are still, our hospitals are still capable of handling the sick, and that is in this somewhat dark times. That's a success. And so for all of our medical professionals who are on the front lines of that, obviously, we thank you for everything that you've done and continue to do for us. So thank you very much, and that's it for me.
Ms. Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few comments tonight. First, regarding our agendas, we've been posting that the folks need to email you to get the link to the meeting. I'm not sure if this was discussed at the advisory meeting with the town boards and committees, but if we could somehow post the meeting links also on the, maybe the calendar invite on the town website or on the boards page, just in the event that people see the agenda but don't see or have access to email. I'm not sure if there's a better way to get these Google Meet links out with the code and everything, but there's a way we can post that just to try to get the most transparency, because folks might not have email and just want to call in, and I'm not sure where that's posted besides online for them to get access to call in. Maybe we can brainstorm something about that, or figure out how to get that posted on the agenda and put up, I don't know if these are getting posted in town hall or something like that, for those folks that don't have access to email or internet. The other item, the Housing Assistance Subcommittee that was put together, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, met last Thursday, and we had a very productive conversation and were getting the ball rolling on that. So right now, we're poised to meet on Thursday and then Monday if needed, so that we can get the suggestions to the board by the 15th, if not sooner. So we just had a few questions that I wanted to bring back to the board. The first being, if the Board of Selectmen was, if this is going to be presented to the Community Preservation Committee through an application, if the Board of Selectmen is going to be the sponsor on that application, the lead applicant. Kind of seemed that way based on the fact that we put together an advisory committee to give us a recommendation to them bring to CPC. So I just wanted to confirm that. And the second question that we have to answer is if there is an article to use CPA funding to provide housing assistance, will that be done on the current town meeting warrant? So will the board reopen the warrant and add that article? Or will we have a special town meeting to take that item up? So those are the two major questions that we had for the board that I wanted to bring back here. Not sure if we have a sense on those tonight, or if we want to put them on our next agenda to discuss. But that would be part of the, that would help inform the ultimate proposal that the group brings forward, so.
Ms. Howe, I apologize, but would you mind repeating the questions that they have? I just want to make sure I've got them written down.
Sure. The first one is if the Board of Selectmen is going to serve as the sponsor/lead applicant on the application that would go before CPC to use the funds for housing assistance. And the second question is if the Board is going to reopen the town meeting warrant to add an article to use CPA funds for the housing assistance, or if we're going to have a special town meeting for that one article to take inspiration.
I don't know. Let me speak first with reopening the warrant. I've got that question out to Town Council. As to what the current legislation does, our warrant, I mean, our town charter is pretty clear about the way that the annual town meeting warrant closes. There's nothing in there that allows it to be reopened. I haven't seen anything in the emergency legislation that would affect that. So my concern is that we would have to somehow come up with a special within the annual to go around that unless Town Council advises us. Otherwise, as for the board being the applicant, I think that depends on what the recommendation is. But I mean, personally, I could see us, if the step is to push somebody to be the formal applicant, if the request that's proposed gets the votes, we could be the applicant. I can't predict that until we have the proposal.
Okay.
I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that's.
Yeah, I mean, I generally agree. I think that, I don't, I can't think of who would be the applicant other than the Board of Selectmen. This, that would make the most sense to me. There are some possibilities, and there's certainly some other options, but given the fact that we are looking to package several different things, both mortgages that might not be related, that might not be something that the CPA can handle, or address, and also rents, which perhaps they would. Ultimately, that's all part of one attempt at stimulus. It's coming from us, and I see us as the applicants personally in that respect. And with regard to the warrant, I also, I believe, a special either inside the annual or immediately after is, seems the most rational based on my reading of the town charter.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes, on Ms. Howe's earlier one of the notifications of the meetings is I believe that it's a possibility SMAC could list those links and so forth on the message board that runs in between programming. It's been done in the past, and I did speak with Mike Hammond on something in another manner of those, so they still have the access to do that. And I believe that would be a very good way, because in between all their airing, it would let people know where to go and how to log on, or then watch the meetings, you know. Maybe they could put something up that lets them know that, you know, usually if you don't have access to online, you know, they'll be posted on SMAC, you know, and aired on two days later or something like that, just so people could see it. So hopefully, they're listening in the control room, and they may be able to reach out and help us with that. Thank you, Ms. Howe.
One of the questions that came up in the group conversations, we've had two of them, is finding a way to balance between having participation by everybody who wants to participate and guarding ourselves against folks who are throwing and crashing public meetings and other things, and putting up things on the screen that you might not want on the screen. Examples have been given about that. And the last get-together we had on this topic was to not post the links, but have them available so that if people call in or they're posted somewhere, they can see them. This obviously requires more work, but there have been public meetings that have been crashed by people, and that was one of the concerns. It's not my area of expertise, so any idea people has that works is good for me.
Right. Well, with that too, as I, you know, if there's going to be any conversations, you know, if we could have, I'd like to know about those as well. And I do understand, but again, I don't know how we can be transparent and how we can make our meetings available to everybody to see them and say that we have to worry about people posting things. So what we're doing is actually cutting a segment of people out of being able to log on and listen to these meetings live. So I understand, you know, the chances that are out there, but I think that might be something that, you know, where we are working with SMAC, and they see something inappropriate get up there, they would be able to just black that out at the time. Because I would imagine when they're airing live, you know, they have the opportunity to just shut off the, you know, the camera at that point or not. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but I just do share, I know it's new to all of us. I mean, it's new to the Commonwealth end of the country as to how we run these virtual meetings with basically the technology in some cases not being able to be kept up with the challenges we face. But again, it seems like only a small group gets notified on how they can participate. So if we want to limit, at least if we can go with the telephone access and quote that, they can't crash a meeting. But right now, if I gave out a link to five people that I thought were trustworthy, and, you know, because they asked me, and they, as a citizen, they wanted to be involved and see this meeting run live, I can't control what they do. So it is that fine line, but I would always want to, go ahead, Christine, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think there's an element of a lack of transparency by requiring the person to email the board chairman to get access to the meeting. You know, they may not feel comfortable doing that.
I don't like that either. I would just, people, you know, which is the first one of these, I'd put the link on the agenda so people could just come in and go as they pleased, and I don't, you know, and then in the next roundtable, that if the board wants to do it that way, I'm fine with it, and maybe we, I'd rather do it, because I frankly don't like the idea of the public having to ask to get a link into a meeting or pay attention to make sure that I respond to all the emails, so I don't miss anybody.
Right.
Well, I would like to go back with the idea of just posting it. I was just texted by a resident that there's no phone number listed again for this agenda, so they can't call in. And again, I think if we try to protect people from the people that make inappropriate statements in public meetings, or hold up pictures, and, you know, or go to public gatherings and, you know, call people names and so forth, we can't control that. That's just people. And, but those same people, whether we agree with them or not, have a right to see every public meeting that we hold.
I don't disagree, so we'll.
No, I know that. I'm not saying you do. But what I'm saying is I think we need to step up a little bit, how we get the information across to everybody, and I think the best avenue is going to be the avenue of cable TV with a message there. And if it gets forwarded to them in a timely manner, they can post that as well as the telephone number, and that should be as well. That information should be posted to SMAC to put up within 48 hours, so we can maintain the open meeting law issue. Because if we hold a meeting and somebody says they had no way of getting into it, you know, that creates a problem for us. And again, I know that we're not going to have to worry about big issues with it, because we're all still trying to learn. And we, you know, if you read the Beacon, you know, Mass Municipal Association, is that we're not alone in this struggle to try and get up on board and be ahead of technology.
My view on this is that I think it's, might be fun to just live dangerously and see what happens. I trust people. I think we'll be fine. In the worst-case scenarios, we make the news, but, you know, this is crazy times. We might as well just roll with the punches.
Anybody else? So move on? I don't want to shut anybody off, but if nobody else.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what's the problem?
All right. So moving on to the Park Street Sewer Project.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
One comment. Highway has asked me to let the public know that the Gay Street facility is open for yard waste. Page Street has been closed because of COVID. I called it corporate. Doesn't look like they're opening in the immediate future, but we have opened Gay Street for yard waste on Saturday, the next two Saturdays from 8:00 to 3:00, I believe. So we're moving along. Clean up your yard, enjoy the great outdoors, clean up your yard, and take it to Gay Street.
As long as you have the camera. Anything else you want to fill in?
Good. Nope, that's it for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayne here. Is this anything to comment?
Actually, it was in reference to what Robin had just brought up, the town manager. I'm wondering, are they just taking yard waste, or are they also taking plastic recyclables and things like that?
Right now, I believe it's just leaves and yard waste. I will update if I hear that it's more.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So let's move on to, we have a hearing scheduled for the Park Street Sewer Project. And what I'd like to do is take a minute to describe a procedure for this project, where we are, and then where the board needs to go to work with the Finance Committee, and then the town meeting representatives to move this project before town meeting, whenever that occurs. Part of what happened when the appropriation was made for the design phase was that the board explained we would work with the material we got during the design phase to prepare a betterment policy and a connection policy so that the financing for this project could be identified. And the general scope of the financing would be available for FinCom and town meeting representatives to go forward with the approval. We've had several meetings where town staff and the consultant have presented the results of their engineering work. There have been some preliminary explanations for where they are in the preparation of funding. And so now we're at the stage where the preliminaries are done. Staff is ready to make a final presentation to us on options for the betterment policies and the connection policies. We split this up into two segments. Tonight, staff, and to the extent there is anyone who wants to speak on the topic, but primarily staff will give us an overview of their recommendations and reasons for it. Notices have gone out to all of the property owners in the affected region. In addition to anyone else who wants to speak, we'll have a full, open, public hearing next Tuesday night, and then the board will do its deliberations and inform FinCom what, if anything, the board decides to do on policies for betterment and connections. These are not rate-setting hearings. The actual dollar amount, the actual mechanics, the actual collection from property owners and those who wish to connect can't and won't be set until we actually know what the figures are. But this is essentially a policy discussion, so everybody gets a sense of where the board would go to make a fair apportionment of the costs. The board has the authority to do this, because in our town government, the Board of Selectmen sits as sewer commissioners, which means setting and collecting the rates for these kind of tasks is ours. So that's it. In keeping with the discussion, so that if folks are watching tonight and wondering how you would participate in the hearing, the next agenda that is posted will have the Google Meets link. It'll have the Google Meets telephone number. The next agenda that is posted will have the Google Meets link, it'll have the Google Meets telephone number. Um and if you don't see it, I encourage you to call the office uh for the details. So with that preliminary out of the way, I'd invite and turn everything over to Mr. Tezdale for the presentation.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everybody, nice to see you. Um yeah, you you really uh set the tone good, Mr. Chairman. Um if you remember last, we were in front of you on March third. Uh we did a presentation just for sewer connection and betterment policies. Uh pretty much the presentation tonight is just to kinda go back through that, since it's been about two months, recap what that was. Uh and present in draft form those betterment and sewer connection policies to the board. Um the town council has reviewed the sewer connection and betterment policies, and I know John Ikeman's on the phone call today. So it's gone through that process. Um the remaining step after this would be that there's been a lot of questions, well, what what are the selectmen gonna do for the betterments? Are they gonna do betterments? And what is the connection policy? After we know the answers to that, we can finalize our financial analysis and do a final presentation to the finance committee. Uh and also reach out to a lot of the uh business owners in the stretch who have answers regarding those questions. Um I'm gonna hand over the presentation to Ziad, if you're there, Ziad. Um I can do the presentation from my end with the slideshow. Uh you can start off, Ziad, and I'll jump in where my point is to jump in. Are you there, Ziad? Alrighty, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, good seeing you all. Um I don't see the presentation on on the screen, but I I have a copy here on my desktop. Um again, it's a little refresher on where we left it off back on March third.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay.
Next slide, please. All right, uh so this is uh the Phase One sewer, really haven't, hasn't changed, it's still consists of seventy-three properties. Uh twenty-eight of which are commercial, uh industrial, and then forty-five are residential. Uh eighty-seven hundred linear feet of gravity sewer. The sewers already established, we size the pipeline, we size the pump station and the pumps. Uh the flow comes from Park Street all the way down to the municipal pump station in the industrial park. And from there on, it gets pumped right through Tenth and then up to um Park Street for discharge. Uh keep in mind, the pump station within Phase One will also be accepting. Some of the flow that would be coming off of Phase Two in the future, the meaning the flow that would be coming off of. Uh the north end of uh uh Turnpike Street. Um again, we talked about the the cost estimate, the cost estimate was developed. Uh back in November, once, once we completed the geotechnical investigation, and we found out exactly what we dealing with in terms of ledge. And refusal along the alignment. Uh today, with the advancement of the preliminary design and the permitting, we're able to set the depth of the sewer, the size of the pipeline, the size of the pumps. Uh trying to wrap up the little details, so we could advance a little further through permitting and final design. And of course, you know, this is a, uh today we dealing with Phase One, but the design obviously consists of Phase One and Phase Two, these two have to kinda work in concert. You can't work, you can't design one without the other, uh so we basically advance in the two phases together at the same time. Uh next slide, please.
Wanna go up one more after this?
You skipped one.
I did?
Yeah, there you go, thank you. Back uh back one mark. The construction cost and the schedule, it would be slide number three.
Yeah, I'm I'm seeing that from my side.
Oh, sorry, all right, so you see, okay, there you go, thank you. Um again, the uh construction cost was uh developed back in uh uh November of twenty nineteen. Uh we we took uh, you know, uh similar projects, Route Nine, more specifically Route Nine and uh. Framingham uh on the Natick Town Line, that's just similar to Route Twenty-Seven, fairly busy. Uh we took into account the ledge quantities, uh consideration to production along Route Twenty-Seven. Uh working within the state highway layout and uh, you know, we took different averages, we were somewhat conservative in the approach. Um and then this is a general breakdown of what the cost of the sewers are gonna be in terms of general tasks. The pipeline itself, the pump station, and uh the the uh, uh you know, we have twenty percent contingency built into this model. Well, hopefully, the COVID-nineteen situation doesn't impact construction moving forward, but then certainly there's a lot of truck through ACEC. Um and other uh uh organizations out there that they'd like to push. Uh 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 the infrastructure bill through Congress, so hopefully we we could see some of that. Nothing's guaranteed, obviously, but uh hopefully there's some money would be coming uh in the next few months. Uh in terms of the schedule, when we uh last met, we were, actually today, we're still on schedule. We we are wrapping up the preliminary design by the end of May, the end of this month coming up. Uh if anything, we're slightly ahead of schedule, we could certainly advance the final design and the permitting and then. Uh be ready by towards the, here we have it on the schedule, uh August of twenty twenty. I think somewhere in in July, we could be wrapped up with a final design. Bidding of bidding and award, it's still scheduled, uh you know, November, December, twenty twenty, the intent is to bid it in the winter. Uh so that way, the uh contractors looking to replenish their backlog, this is the most advan- uh you know, advantage. In terms of uh putting jobs out there to to bidding, because construction uh starts in the spring. And that's when a lot of people are hungry and ready to go, so hopefully we could get some decent numbers uh with that. Um, next slide, please. So the uh the project background before EP, my company got involved here since twenty fifteen. Uh the the uh sewer priority plan was completed back in twenty fifteen. And there's a lot of meetings, the Board of Selectmen, public forum, that happened in twenty nineteen, almost a year ago. Today was the finance committee on May uh May one, twenty nineteen. And then last time we went before you was uh March of twenty twenty. Um in between, we did the uh the uh stakeholder, the business stakeholders information session back in February twenties, twenty twenty. And then we did finance committee on March eleven, twenty twenty. History of funding sewer projects, uh you know, you all know, it's the between nineteen, uh nineteen eleven and two thousand historically. The town bears a minimum of one-third of the sewer cost. Um and utilize supplemental funding from outside sources, mostly federal grants and government money. Um in the two thousands, up to two thousand, I think, federal money was pouring into these sewer project. I was pretty much involved in uh uh on the North Shore, there's a lot of communities, um Bill Rica and some other places. They got ton of money. Um today, that federal funding is fairly um, has fairly dried up. Uh so since nineteen eleven, between nineteen eleven, two thousand, uh nearly seventy percent of stolen received municipal uh sewer. And then anything beyond that was very negligible. Uh this is the kind of the history behind the funding on these projects. Uh with this, I will turn it back over to uh Mark to discuss the connection policies, and I'll be available for questions. Um at the end when this is done.
Thank you, Ziad. Uh the next slide refers to the connection policy number one, uh you're very familiar with this, you pretty much saw this exact slide in March. But just to recap this, uh there's two different parts of the policy, ones for residential, ones for commercial properties. Uh for residential properties, it would be required to connect within ten years of the pipe being installed in the ground. Uh for commercial industrial properties, within three years. Uh under each one of those situations, you know, we would give them an incentive uh for the residential properties. We would give them an incentive of waiving the permit fee and the INI fee if they connect within three years. The same thing for commercial industrial properties if they connect within one year. If if, for example, a residential property had a septic system that they just installed two years prior to the sewer pipe going in. Well, we understand that, that they dished out a few bucks to install that septic system. So we extend the sewer connection um by five years, so they would actually have fifteen years to connect. Uh obviously, each policy would have a condition in it where if you had a field cesspool. Uh you would, and you had to upgrade your septic system, you would have to connect to the sewer pipe. Uh instead of building a septic system, same thing with if you sold your property. And the same thing if if you were building a new, new building in that project area on a piece of vacant land or or something like that. The next slide is the same exact thing, we just wanted to give the board some options here to look at. Uh because we've heard through finance committee meetings and through, I believe, even Board of Selectmen meetings and even public comment. That um they wanna look at the commercial properties a little differently and and require a one-year connection policy. So you'll see the impact of connection policy one versus connection policy two further in this presentation. But everything else is the same, it's just how quickly through the commercial and industrial properties connect. Connection policy one versus connection policy two, uh the main difference is you're getting sewer revenue in years one and two. Because obviously, uh they're, the commercial properties are connected, we know what the flows are, we know what our sewer rates are, so we know what the numbers are. So you get three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars of sewer sewer revenue in year one and two. Uh over the twenty years, you can see what the numbers are uh for the total revenue of of all revenue, sewer, water, and tax. Uh connection policy one and two. You could get your return on your investment uh on connection policy two one year earlier. Moving on to the betterment policy, uh you've seen this slide uh before, I'll try to summarize it the best I can. Uh there's pretty much four categories of a betterment policy, and everybody, I guess just to rewind a little bit, pretty much a betterment is. You're charging whoever betters themselves from tying into the sewer, so whoever has a sewer going across their frontage. And they have the ability to connect to the sewer, you're charging a betterment. Um the way we've, we decided to use betterment, uh betterment calculations were based on Title V flows. And we separated into four categories, uh you get two for residential, so obviously if you have a residential property that's developed, already has a building on it. A residential property that's undeveloped, so it doesn't, it's a residentially zoned parcel, but there's nothing on it. You have a commercial property that's developed or a non-commercial, uh or not. And a commercial property that's undeveloped, sorry, excuse me. Uh for residential properties, we're basing the betterment policy on units. So, for example, one single-family dwelling based on Title V flows would be one unit. A duplex house would be two units, a three-family, three units and so on. Um and for residential undeveloped uh properties, which is, there are really not that many in this area, I think there's maybe one or two the most. Um it would go by what your available frontage and area is and how many frontage lots you could get. So in other words, if you could, if you had two hundred feet of frontage and you had enough area to build two lots, you would get two units. Um established. From a non-residential side, we're basing it all on the equivalent unit, which is a single-family dwelling. So we're relating everything back to the flow of a single-family dwelling. Um and we're dividing the water usage for these commercial properties. By that single-family dwelling unit of three hundred thirty gallons per day. That's what a single-family dwelling unit is, uh and you just do the math out. So for example, if you had um one, a how, a single-family house, you you're one unit. If you had roughly a a commercial property or industrial property utilizing three thousand gallons per day roughly. Uh you do the three thousand divided by three thirty, that would be ten units. So the 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 commercial industrial property would be charged ten times the amount of a single-family dwelling. Uh and the same philosophy is true for the non-residential undeveloped properties, I think there's just one of them in that project area. Uh but it would follow the same terminology, but there'd be a little work for Craig and I to look at the property. And we'd have to see how much of a building could be put on the property, and we would estimate a betterment based on that. Uh Paul, uh based on the area of the property and the buildability of the property. Um through various meetings um with the FinCom and with the selectmen and the public. Um privilege fees seem to be something that the uh public want us, wants us to explore. So they're pretty common to establish what privilege fees are. Essentially, a privilege fee would be if all the, if the sewer line got installed and everybody had a betterment issued to them. And say you had that piece of property in the back of all the people who just got a betterment charged to them. We call like like that the back lot uh situation. And then a developer came in and put in thirty house lots and was able to connect that sewer. You know, they should have, they should have to pay for the sewer just like everybody else did. So they would be assessed the same type of betterment based on the terminology set forth in the policy. So if they could put thirty houses in there, they would be charged thirty units, because that's thirty single-family dwellings. Um like, the other case would be if you had a undeveloped um piece of property. And where we estimated a certain amount of flow for that property, but they, they came in with more flow. So when they actually built something on that property, say we estimated that they could put a thousand square foot retail building. And they come up, come in with a three thousand square foot retail building, or we can assess them at that time of the building permit, a privilege fee. Of the difference of what we charged them originally for the thousand square foot building. Last slide just summarizes the financial analysis uh for connection policy one and two. Uh as you can see, you know, the numbers are generally pretty close for sewer connection policy one, you get total revenue over the twenty years. Uh financing this for twenty million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, for connection policy number two, it's twenty-one million, sixty-five thousand. And the difference is mostly due, oops, sorry, is mostly due to the uh sewer revenue that you you get earlier on in the project. Uh we did run, run the numbers for two percent interest loan on the, a two percent interest. Uh on the loan and a four percent interest on the loan, because we feel comfort, pretty comfortable that we're going to get a uh SRF loan through the state. But we're not guaranteed that, but we just wanted to show you the difference in this chat with, of how a two percent interest would affect, be affected versus a four percent interest. Um I think that's all I got for tonight, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
Let me lead with one, Bill Rowe, are you here? I know we sent you a connection, Mike.
I am, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, Bill?
Yes, sir, good, thanks, good, Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
Good, I I I um, I'm concerned about two things with this project. Uh one of them may be the same everybody has, which is with the current state of the economy and burden on the taxpayer. Uh going forward with this kind of a project now. There's a, there's reason to believe between outright stimulus to get the economy going and then, and then another infrastructure. That if we position ourselves right, we may luck out if we commission this project. So uh assuming the worst, which is that we vote to approve the project and we don't get any of those um. Uh those stimulus money or grants to take the burden off. When would we have to start paying the bond down? When's the first fiscal year, if if, based on the, on the um. On the um. Description on when the work would begin and when we, and when we would activate the sewer line. When do the payments?
Well, you could go, you could go short term for one to two years, in certain conditions up to five years, where you'd just be interest only.
Okay.
But then that 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 uh reduces the amount of term that you could borrow for for long term. So in other words, if it's a, a sewer's a thirty-year project, so if you went, if you want short term. Uh for two years, then you could issue a twenty-eight-year bond if need be. Uh obviously, the higher, higher interest cost with the longer the term of the bond.
So so there's a way to 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 feather getting this project going. Uh while the revenue stream catches up to service the debt.
That's true, that's true, um I wanna consult with our financial advisor about the markets and things like that, but. Yeah, you could, you, I know you could do it at least two years, Bob, and I think it might be, I think with the um municipal modernization, they might have extended that a little bit longer. Um but I I'm pretty sure it's at least two years you can roll up, roll over a a ban.
Um can can I um uh offer to to all of you who've spoken and tell and ask if you can tell me how wrong I am in this? In this thinking. Um from the work we're doing where where I work, uh it's obvious that this is a difficult time, but there are also. People who will see opportunities in this market. There are people who are prepared to make investments and they're looking for places to invest. And to those uh people who have the ability to do so, much of the decision has to do with rate of return. That is, if I put a hundred and I'm gonna make up a number, if I put five million dollars into a project in Stoughton today. And I make ten million dollars out of that in five years, I'm ahead of the game. Um and so for them, that's a good investment. Um and the and when I'm looking at this project, one of the challenges I'm gonna have is figuring out. Where we put ourselves to catch the investment cycle on the upside. Uh because it's the return on investment here that when we did the preliminary work presented the most attractiveness of people in this project. That is, current property owners and future investors said to us, pretty much, and tell me if I get this wrong, Mark. If you build it, we are already there or we will come. And so um is my thinking that preparing this site for the investment community? Would be on the whole worth a way to consider this as opposed to just being intimidated by the debt service? Which I think all of us uh would be anyway. But the upside is something we should think about and how to manage the debt. So we don't lose the opportunity by being intimidated by the timing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, um if you want, I can I can ask Cinder McNerney at at Hilltop to produce some models. If you like for, you know, she, if you have any ideas, so maybe you can email me what your, what your thoughts were for the, you know, she she can. Spit out four or five models with not much time at all, if we give her some, you know, assumptions.
The gist of it is, you know, if you're listening to some of the public health discussions, uh depending on. What magic happens with respect to the virus. Um we're in this and it's over in a matter of months or we're in it for a year, a year and a half. But after a while, um uh this crisis will pass. Um and the question is, do we want to let this opportunity to get this done also pass? Or or can we position ourselves uh to get it done right and and capture the improved tax base? And pay for it if we manage the debt. That's what I want to know.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up on that for a question for Bill. Do you know what kind of um capacity we have in the sewer enterprise to handle the debt service for this project?
Um well, based upon the hearings that we've had, you know, the water sewer rate hearings that we've had before, you know. You all know that the sewer department's, you know, pretty much on the bubble. It's pretty close to a break-even point. Um so yeah, that would be, it would be a burden for, you know, for both principal and interest right now.
Mr. Chairman?
McChrisky.
It's just a follow-up in that, uh I agree with almost everything that's been said, uh with the exception of really knowing what um. What's the buy-in on this? Uh you know, I I share, you know, concerns on where we are and where our economy could be heading. We're in very uncertain times at best. And I think it's gonna be pretty difficult for us to gauge what people are gonna do on investments, where the economy is gonna go. And uh I don't want to see this backfire on us as well as the residents. Uh I'd like to see, I guess, by address. I mean, uh what is every resident's vote on this if they're in favor of it? Uh and every business. Now, we had some great meetings. Um run by the engineering department, Mr. Tisdale and his staff knocked it out of the ballpark. But there were people that were interested at best. There was no, I never had anybody and I was at uh, I believe, one of them there and um. To both two meetings on one night. And nobody come up and said, hey, listen, build it and I'm coming. We're gonna build this. We're gonna do it. It was just everybody saying just that. It could be and they might, and it'll be great opportunity for them. But again, you know, and I think you you touched that is that, you know, uh I think we should, I don't think right now. We should be looking at a build it and they may come. Uh build it and they're there, build it and they're committed, build it, build it and they want it and, you know, we have a way of knowing realistically. Uh the benefit, but um I would just, I'm very cautious in where we are right now and we don't know. We we can't even, we talked about how to best advertise our meetings with the challenges of what we're dealing with here. Now we're talking about, you know, bonding, you know, twenty million dollars. So it's um it's something we gotta really, really have some hard facts on. And uh as you know, uh I've been, uh at one point I was opposed. I'm not at that point anymore because it is making sense. The numbers are looking right. Things are coming together. But I do have that grave concern that this may not be the time that we should be making this kind of a move. So I'd like to know more about how the people in the affected areas feel. The betterments are gonna be costly. You know, and the hookup fees are gonna be costly. If they have a sewer system that, you know, is borderline failing. You know, I mean, how are we gonna say, and I know the engineering department's fair in everything they do, but you know, what's gonna be the impact on these homeowners? When we have an economy that has people living that may have lost their jobs? You know, and we're gonna put this on as well. I mean, it's, I I'm just concerned. So I just wanted to get that out there and and hopefully there's a way that we can get better gauge the buy-in of the residents. Even if it's through a certified letter with a, you know, a stamped address envelope back to the board of selectmen. Um or whatever it is, that we know what our our residents want and what the the business community is willing to do. Uh because they're the ones, if we build it and they decide they don't want to hook up and they don't have to, other than through the um the sewer policy. You know, I've just got those concerns. And I know that uh Mark Tisdale just raised his hand.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Joe. I think Joe made some good points. And we've, quite frankly, we've got a handful of large industrial owners on board in the in the park. Obviously, there's seventy-three properties, so that's five or six out of the seventy-three. A lot, when I walked around and I knocked on doors, everybody, there wasn't one person who said they didn't want the sewer. But they were concerned about how it would financially impact them. And at that point, I obviously could not say, I didn't know if it was gonna be a full betterment or no betterment or twenty-five or fifty. Uh so nobody was really fully committal until they knew if there was going to be a betterment and how much it was going to be. So I think once we make that decision, I think that survey is a good idea. And I think a little more foot traffic around that neighborhood might make sense, or maybe not these days, but I think you catch my drift. Um we won't get too many committals to this or opinions on this until we decide what. You know, what connection policy we're going with and what type of betterment we're going with.
Right, and and that's what I'm saying. I I think it's it's important for us to have that information. Because if we've got seventy-three properties in there and only, you know, five or six have shown interest. They could change their mind as to what they're gonna do and we don't know that. We could, we could make it advantageous and say this is the best we can do. And they'll say, yeah, yeah, we're interested. And then they don't do anything and we we don't have that revenue come in. So then, you know, the taxpayers, you know, are gonna have a heavier burden. So, you know, I want to see realistic numbers. I I'm not opposed to it, but let's find out what it's really gonna cost us. So it doesn't backfire and say, well, it was a good idea, but it only benefited half of the people in the affected area.
Well, there's a couple of things I'd like to to just throw in here. First of all, um, Mr. McChrisky, I definitely appreciate like um uh your comments and and so. Uh I I really hope, you know, this this is okay. I'm not, I I have uh respect for what your your thoughts are. Uh my concern is that that there are uh those types of assurances. If you look at it from the from the point of view of a business. Uh it would be irresponsible for them to commit to something, to a project that hasn't, hasn't even started. Financially commit to a project that might take one year, two years, you know, it it just doesn't, it doesn't. Make any sense for their own financials to commit to something. And so of course, they're only gonna be able to say that we are interested. I don't, I think anything beyond that, um. I think it's not, it's not necessarily realistic. Um but I'd also just like to add one other point. Uh there is definitely an economic benefit to the sewer. Uh and it's one that that the town could, I think, will benefit from overall. But there's, there is also a very critical um health concern as well. There there, the septic tanks, these cesspools are are uh not dug particularly deep. Uh they, i- as my understanding, this has been presented to town meetings, it's been presented to us numerous times. Uh those, there is leakage into our into our water tables. And if some someone's, if someone uh understands it differently now, correct me. But if that is still true, uh asking a resident if if um if it, you know, if if it's too expensive for them to please stop. Putting feces into our water table, I I think is not really the right question to be asking here. That that if, that if this is uh a sincere uh public health concern. Then it is the, it should be a concern of the entire community. It should be something the entire community has asked. Is if 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 uh if we would, should allow this to continue and all. Um uh live under these con- conditions. And if if everyone, you know, from my, from what we've seen, at least what I've absorbed from town meeting, from talking to people, they don't want that. And uh we can certainly find a compromise that allows for the homeowners to be uh treated fairly throughout this process. I think there's there's these policies have a lot of wiggle room for that. But um expecting businesses to commit to something that's not prepared. And then reaching out to our uh to the only the people who will have to pay these betterments and um. Weigh weigh their views uh higher than the rest of the community that is actually. Uh would be benefiting benefiting as well, I think is not, it doesn't have the same sort of um, I don't know. I it's not very, I I don't think it's a very strong argument. I think that we have to look at a slowly part bigger picture. And I I apologize if that came out wrong. I'm just, I'm really tired. And so I I hopefully there's no, no offense taken. I understand your position and and it's shared by others, uh people and I I respect it. But I think there are, there is um uh some greater concerns that we have to to be feeling as well. Thank you.
If I can, thank you, Sead. I I just, I do want to respond to a couple of that because uh if the businesses are not gonna commit, why should the residents commit? Uh I have not seen a document yet that said this is a public health emergency. And in fact, I asked the question of the engineering department in one of our previous meetings about how many systems that were on the verge of failure. And it was a small amount. Uh I know that anything could be done, but at the worst-case scenario. Uh if you look at the intersection of Ash Street and Park Street, there was a septic system that failed. Yeah, a cesspool failed and it was uh it was rebuilt and there was one that's it's raised up and it's a new system. Um if there's any documentation, as you say, feces leaking into our public water any more than uh any other well in town. I'd like to know that. And I'd like to see the paperwork on it because I don't feel that's the case. I would hope the Board of Selectmen as water and sewer commissioners would know if we have a well that's being polluted because we have in the past. I don't think that's the case, so I don't think it's an argument here. Um I I know that we may differ on this. I know we want to both do what's right for the town. But I still say that there's a lot of questions up in the air that with this unforeseen uh budgetary issues we're gonna be facing. I mean, the government is still printing money. That bill's gonna be paid, you know, sooner or later. And we don't know where our local economy is going. And I think, and again, I'm open to the idea. I really am open to the idea. I said I was opposed to it at one time, but as we've gone along, uh under the leadership of the engineering department, I've I've seen the light. What I'm just saying is I hope that light's not, you know, a train in a tunnel coming at me. So it um it's just something that we have to get all this out. I don't want to see people in a small area being stuck with that bill. That could put some people into bankruptcy. It could. We we don't know in this area how many people because of this COVID have lost their jobs. Are struggling to make a mortgage payment, you know, or whatever. We don't know their financial situation. So I think we need to know as much as we can know if we're gonna put this kind of a borrowing item on the backs of the residents when we don't even know what's in front of us. So I I didn't take any offense to any of your comments at all. This is what I've always said is what we do here uh should always be a collision of ideas. And what it's all said and done, is it worth taking the steps? You know, on behalf of the residents, because we are all the residents and we've got to make sure we're making an informed decision. And I want to be as much information as possible.
Ms. Howe, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh thank you for the presentation um once again, Mark. Yeah, I mean, it's, I I hear what Mr. McChrisky's saying and I, you know, we're in kind of a a lot of an unknown time right now. Um but I think there's also gonna be some opportunity that comes out of this in terms of shovel-ready projects. Um in terms of grant funding. I mean, we're already seeing this through numerous venue, you know. State agencies that are that are pushing out these grants and so um there's kind of two competing things here. We have the own of of what people might be going through and and not be able to afford uh to pay for. And, you know, when this is done in two years or I think it was um, remind remind me of the timeline for project completion. Um, Mark.
Yeah, it starts next twenty-two years, twenty-one.
Twenty, June twenty-one?
Construction ends on June twenty twenty-two. We have an escort, right, Ziad?
Uh with the final paving, so that would be the uh uh we'll let it sit for season and we'll come back and just do a final. But the bulk of the work would be done twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, so um you know, that's creeping up on us, but I, you know, I'm not sure what position we'll be in in twenty twenty-one. Uh we might be primed for, you know, commercial industrial properties to move in and and take up these spaces. And and approve the um the property tax that we collect down there. Um but whether the businesses are there, a lot of business will be in the same position we are now. Um so this is an improvement project and it, you know, based on the return on investment. You know, I'm a little concerned about that that debt service, but again, if we can get some grant funding and the low interest rate on the bond. Which I think will be competitive to get just because it'll be shovel shovel-ready. Um you know, I think it might, it it might actually pan out. And I know that the connection policy and the veteran policy includes a hardship waiver in there. So folks are later suffering from the the results of the pandemic, the board can grant them um a hardship waiver. Um I did have a question on the um the connection policy. So in terms of residential, um the exception for a new septic being installed was within the last five years. And you get an additional uh five on the ten-year connection. However, that's overridden upon sale. Um so if someone were to install a new septic last year and then sell their home. A year later, um would that, they would still be required to upgrade to the sewer upon sale? Even if they're within that five-year window of installation of a new septic?
Yeah, I mean, that would go upon the transfer of property. So that's something, if 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 that's something the board wants to tweak, can certainly be tweaked. To go with the date of the installation of the septic as opposed to ownership.
Yeah, to me, that makes a little more sense because then you're getting two new systems within probably five years if if there was a sale within the timeframe.
I think that's a good point, Christine.
Um yeah, I mean, I I want to see this project move forward because I believe in it. I think it's, as Mr. Cave said, it's good for health and I think it's good for for our our return on investment with the sewer. Um in that area, so um. I guess I just want to ensure that the cost burden that's on the resident doesn't exceed what it would cost to upgrade their systems on their own. Typically, that's around, I would say, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um so if residents are gonna end up paying more than that through this project over the, over the course of when they can make the payments on a payment schedule. And it might not be worth it. Um if they're gonna, if it's gonna break even, it'd be less than it, it might financially be worth it, folks. Those are my.
So to to come to the connect the dots, uh in in my head, I think one of the lessons history teaches us is that areas. That have invested in infrastructure typically do better than areas that don't. Um we we still have a lot of infrastructure that was put in in times of bad economic like. Uh think back to the depression and how much infrastructure we still see and still use. All of that done to spur economic growth and it, because of highway system, uh that's all infrastructure. And think of what that's done to economic activity. So I, I think priority number one is to, since this project makes fundamental sense. since this project makes fundamental sense, is to come up with a way to get this project eligible for whatever free money is out there. And if we don't act to do that, we'll see it pass us by and that money will go to other communities. Those communities will be competing for the economic development we want for this area. And we'll have only ourselves to blame because we didn't make ourselves ready to take advantage of those same projects. So what I want to work on is a way to get us ready to qualify. And similar to the commitments we made about moving forward if the ledge made it uneconomical. Bear in mind that there might be some economics circumstances that indicate the town, if we don't qualify, some of these benefits would defer for a little while on activity. But in the long run, this is a project that we should have undertaken years ago for what we look at every year in making the end weight for our budget. We all wish we had the money that this project would give us. It would have cost us less and we would have got more, uh, we would have got more. So it's that balancing that I think we all need to work on. And I would ask us all to approach this not from whether we do it, but how we get it done. That is, this is a project that was meaningful for us three months ago. How do we, how do we get this done? And how do we do it in a way that does not hurt the taxpayers? I think there's a way to do it if we all work together.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Paul Demuse.
Paul, hold on.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on.
Mr. Chip.
Hold on. Hold on. Now, any other board members before this was this was posted for public participation? So Paul, hold on because the board's not finished yet. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, no problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
I share, I share your comments. Um, but I would add that I don't want to see us get to a point where if we get this project ready and we don't get grants, and I agree, let's get this project ready, but if we don't get grants, we need a stopgap that allows us to stop and not just say, well, sorry, we tried to get the grants to the residents, but we didn't get them, so we're just going to borrow the whole thing. I agree moving forward. I agree with you that if there is going to be money put in for shovel-ready projects, you know, that we would be foolish not to be ready to take advantage of that. But on the other hand, we should be, we need to have something that if we don't, we are able to stop it or reassess what we do.
The Board of Selectment has to start it by voting the bond, then as sewer commissioners, we're the people that have to vote to let the work begin in the first place. If we can work together with everybody so that folks are comfortable that we're not going to pull, we're not going to, you know, start the project unless the conditions are correct. And we and we set some parameters for that. It it should be, it should be doable. I I don't, for example, if we were to take a vote tonight on the bond, I wouldn't vote for it because we're not in a position to say this is a vote of fund. If we don't approve this in town meeting, we'll never get to the point of having a project that we can get relief or stimulus money for because we won't qualify. And so we're straddling that line that we need to work on and have the our fellow residents understand that we have a sincere commitment, if that's where we go, that either the economy gets better, we get grant money, or essentially where I'm coming from, or the the project is deferred until the circumstances make it viable. But bottom line is the project should be approved so we can go forward when the time is right and we get the money.
To uh, to, to, to. Well, I want to spend, I want to respond to that, Bob. I'm sorry, Stephen. Is that, again, if I remember in a prior presentation, we were told that we would have to vote the bond. We would have to have financing ready to go. And then we would get a grant that would take away from that. So I I want to see that clarified because if we're going to vote a bond and then say, well, you know, we got the money and we didn't get the grant, so we're moving forward anyway because we already took all of our votes. That's what I'm talking about is if we're gonna be forced to do that, there's got to be a stopgap that we can reconsider.
And now those are my first questions to Bill this evening because I want to find out for sure what our phases are. And I want to find out if my understanding of the stages is off. How I understand the stages are, we do our work, the finance committee does its work, town meeting does its work. We get a vote to authorize. Vote to authorize, including the borrowing, doesn't mean that the Board of Selectment has to take a vote to issue the debt or commence the project.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear you say. Thank you.
And that's the point where I would say on the Board of Selectment, we commit to FinCom, the town meeting, the residents, the taxpayers, that we will put a hold on it on going forward to make sure we can do it. On the other hand, we're not going to hold it up anymore because, you know, we should be kicking ourselves that we don't have the tax revenue coming in now. We should be kicking ourselves that we didn't have this built in the American Recovery Act in two thousand eight, when it could have been paid for. And we should be kicking ourselves because, you know what? There's a restaurant we all know in that neighborhood that has and and other folks in that neighborhood that have real problems in the summertime because of the pollution that Mr. Cave is referring to. It's a quality of life as well as health issue because when you inhale those fumes, it's not, you know, it's not flowers that you're smelling.
No, I understand that, but let's let's not take, keep going that road because there's no documents to back that up. I want to see documents, okay? If there's, if it's a public health issue, let's see the documents. I understand it's a, it's an unpleasant smell without a doubt. But they're meeting their needs because, you know, they're doing a good job of providing a service. Is that they pump it every day. Yes, it's a, it's a crazy cost that a lot of people may not do it. And, you know, and I think honestly, I can't say that I speak for them, but I would be willing to bet they'll wait and see, you know, if they're going to be able to stay in town by what we do here, which is important. But again, we have to look at everybody involved, and I'm just putting that out, is that that we have some way to stop it. We have factual data and, you know, and you've just said it, you know, that we, there's a chance we would get this and and stop.
I would put it a different way. I would say we don't, we have a way to not start it yet. And that's why I started off with the questions I did.
Well, not starting and stopping are two different things, I guess, right? You know, but they mean the same.
My starting is, I think your concern, which I agree with, is that we start down the road and it's too late to stop and then it hurts the town or the taxpayers or the property owners.
Yeah, I think we've, we've all, I think we're all in agreement on this, that uh, that um, uh, we want to push this as far as we can, take advantage of anything, any any pro, uh, programs that are available for us. Uh, on the one hand, and on the other, for whatever may be worth, I commit to not harming the citizens of town by by pushing projects forwards that that we just can't afford. Uh, and so, you know, I I think that that's the thing we have that stops us from doing that is just our conscience. I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to do that. So uh, and I I hope that people have faith that that we do have a conscience and that we wouldn't do it. And and I I hope that's the case.
Well, anything else from board members? Otherwise, I'd like to open it up to the public. All right, everybody's microphone. Joe, can you turn off your microphone if you're not going to talk so I can get a clear read here? All right. So Paul, go ahead.
Hi, um, I I do public commercial construction and I'm already seeing cities and.
Paul, fill us your full name and where you are, like, just like we were in the great hall.
Okay, Paul Demuse, precinct three, I'm a town meeting rep, I'm on the zoning board. I do commercial construction and I'm already seeing cities and towns stopping projects that were already to put out for bid. Now, I don't know the exact reason behind it because at some point, all this printed money is going to come back to haunt us all. The other thing is, if there is a public health component in this that maybe in the betterment, at least a portion should be paid for townwide, not just that end of of town. And yeah, that's pretty much what I had had to say.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else from the public? If you'd like to speak, turn on your microphone. I'm watching for.
I did turn it on.
Is that you, Mr. Anzavino?
Yes, it is, Mr. O'Regan.
So could you identify yourself, Mr. Anzavino?
Certainly. My name's John Anzavino. I'm at twenty-five Ross Avenue. I'm a precinct four town meeting rep and I'm a member of the finance committee. Uh, one of the concerns I have based on the discussions at the finance committee, it's been stated for some time now that it would be hard for us to back a project without seeing what the connection and betterment policies are going to be. And that's been going on for some time, and I know at one of our meetings last week, that very issue was raised that we haven't seen them yet. Uh, we do have two meetings this week, tomorrow night and Thursday. And we had talked about trying to wrap this up, especially where we don't know when town meetings are going to be. So we don't even know what our deadlines are. Uh, I do expect a number of discussions to come up after some of the information that's coming out now with what the state is planning to or what they're looking at losing this fiscal year as as well as what they're projecting maybe for the next fiscal year. And and the town of Stoughton hasn't made any changes to what they voted on in December now that we've had all these issues going, so. You know, just in the overall process, I just see a hard time going before the finance committee without having some of the policies and so forth already voted that we had asked for a year ago. So that's just something I'm passing on. It's my own opinion based on my my interactions with my my own committee. So that is a concern. And I do agree with Ms. Howe as far as, you know, if somebody happens to have just replaced their system and decides to sell their property before this sewer is built, they wouldn't have the opportunity to connect. So they could be in that situation where they've made the connection, and then if they do have to sell for whatever reason, you know, you have a system in place that's probably good for X number of years and you'd be looking to basically have have to make the new connection. So I think Ms. Howe brought up a very good point where that should be something that is taken into consideration when you're looking at your policy, your connection policy.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Can you say who you are and where you're from?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Peter Brown. I live on Chapman Road and I'm precinct two rep.
Hi, Peter.
How are you? I just want to weigh in a little bit. I think it's a great project. I think it's a much-needed project, but I just think right now, it's probably the wrong time, given the, you know, pandemic and the virus and the impact on the economy and the funds that could be, that is definitely uncertain. I believe the town primary focus should be solely on the budget and potentially to protect our services and the employees. Any additional spending at such, at this such time, and I I and I agree with you, you know, if you're trying to just prepare to be ready, if there was some stimulus money or grant money or anything else, but I did hear one of your experts said that some of that money has dried up already. So my my thought is I would just caution, I'm just offering some caution before we move on something like this. Let's be certain we're going to be able to keep our services in place and our employees in place, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Stay well.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyway, I just heard somebody. Is anyone else on the line? All right, I'm not hearing anybody, so I want to thank everybody for participation. We will have a formal public hearing on this next week. All of the property owners either have received or if they didn't today, they will be receiving notices of the hearing. And hopefully, Mr. Rowe can.
Hello.
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 Yeah. Peter Ventresco.
Hello.
Peter Ventresco.
Give us, so what? And and please identify yourself as if you were in the great hall there, Peter.
I have something to say. Peter Ventresco, five eighty-seven Ken Street, town meeting rep.
Go ahead.
All right, what I'd like, what I'd like to address is, maybe I missed it. A Mr. Tisdale's presentation about the sewer connections. I would like the sewer connections right to the property line. So in five or ten years later, if somebody's going to hook up the sewer, they don't have to go out in the middle of the street and remain and disrupt the road again.
Mr. Tisdale, can you answer that?
And now, uh, the, I think the time is wrong. We're in this bad epidemic here. Boy, I'm hearing a echo here that's driving me crazy. I don't know if it's me or somebody else talking. But anyways, we're pushing thirty million people being unemployed in this country. They'll probably surpass the Great Depression. So the time is wrong. We don't know how many of these companies down there in Campina Drive are even going to be around here next year. And 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 the government is going to come out with it. Both Democrats and Republicans want an infrastructure program. And usually, when they come out, there's roads, bridges, water mains, sewer, you name it. And if you've got a plan that's shovel-ready, you can get the money and maybe it's only going to cost us five cents of the dollar to get it done like it has been. And shovel-ready means not that you're going to spend two years to have a plan drawn up. The plan has to be ready on that day, otherwise the horse has left the trough and you're not going to get any money. We have a master plan someplace. We should look at it and see if it's going to handle our needs for today. So when the money is here, we are shovel-ready.
Anything else, Peter?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on the line?
No, I think I said what I wanted to say.
All right, stay well.
Hello.
Hello.
Cynthia Walsh, ten ninety-six Park Street.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm snug at at home. I'm also precinct two rep. I don't think that many of the people that are listening who live on Park Street realize that the sewer isn't going from Tenth Street or Campanelli to the Brockton Line. They think that's where it's going, and a previous speaker mentioned the Chateau Restaurant. This, this phase is taking a right at Tenth and Park and going down to what most of us know as Line Lumber Road. I don't think the folks, hopefully, I heard that they're they're getting letters. But for many of them, I think it's the first time they're aware that the sewer, this phase at least, is going their way. I, it's, I know it's a tough time, but when we did have a public hearing on the Park Street sewer, it was basically the folks in my neck of the woods and they were unanimously opposed. I don't know how those people feel from Tenth Street to Fano. There, there has to be, besides the letter, some simple five questions of are you interested or something like how old is your system? Are you interested? They don't, they don't have to make a commitment, but until folks know that it's going their way and they know the cost. You've been discussing betterments now since last year in December. Even without people losing their jobs and all of that, folks still want to know what is this going to cost me? Because if you put in a new system that's good for ten or twenty years and you don't have to pay for sewer, which is expensive, you you may end up, end up not wanting to to join the public sewer. So I'm very interested in how those forty-five homeowners are feeling. Not so much how the people on Campanelli Drive feel. One of those buildings just sold for seven million dollars. I don't see those folks suffering too much. But I do know that the folks along that roadway, we need to find out, they need to find out what it's going to cost, and we need to find out if it's worth it for them. I know if somebody said, well, it's good for everybody's health and it's also good for the town's economy. But most of us who don't have a sack of gold or a money tree have to be more selfish and think of what is this going to cost me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob.
Uh, Mr. Laurie.
Thank you for, thank you. David Lurie, precinct six, on eighteen Robinette Road. I just want to point out, there seems to be almost a misconception that this article has to pass in order to make it shovel-ready. My, when I did some research since the meeting in which it was, that impression was created, I found out that, it's not a very old term, it only goes back to the Obama administration. You referred to that two thousand eight opportunity when the money couldn't be spent because there weren't enough, quote unquote, shovel-ready projects. The work that was approved for feasibility that our engineering department put together and as, and as Mark has advanced, only has to finish the spending on that appropriation to make that phase, and, and actually both phases. Both phases are shovel-ready when he's done with his feasibility study on the eight hundred thousand that was or, that's already almost finished being spent. So, when he's done spending that appropriation, within ninety days, he'll be able to put a shovel in the ground. He doesn't need to have this article approved for seven million dollars in order to qualify for stimulus money. So, I just wanna make sure the, the impression of what a shovel-ready project is, is not somehow misconstrued as having a requirement to pass the article that's in front of everybody for this town meeting. That's all I have to say.
And let me just, let me hit that back to you, David. The, the challenge is, when, when this stimulus or relief funding package is made available, that whatever we would like to do is in a stage that qualifies us to apply. No two sets of stimulus or recovery packages is identical. So, uh, especially, you know, when, when the temperature of the Congress changes on what kinds of projects and what eligibility and, you know, whether there's a view that this will help red states and this will help blue states and all of that fits in. We don't know what the mix is going to be. And my concern is, I don't want this town to be on the wrong side of a sentence in a bill to keep us from being qualified unless we reconvene the town meeting to get something approved. Uh, if we, if we can come to an understanding of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and appropriate that way. That's, that's my, that's my issue, because this is not the time or the place to debate what will be in the next stimulus bill. We don't know what it'll be and I, I mentioned to say, many of the congressmen and senators won't know what's in it either until after it's passed.
Well, if, if, if the town picked up a stimulus check for seven million dollars the day after the stimulus thing was passed, the question is, is could we spend it? And the answer would be yes. If we picked up seven million dollars from the federal government, Stoughton would be able to say, hey, guess what? We not only have a phase one at seven million, but we've got a phase two worth another five or six. You know, give us thirteen to fifteen million dollars, thank you very much, and we'd have it. Based on the feasibility work that Mark Tinsdale is doing now, by the time he finishes spending it, he could put a shovel in the ground within ninety days of getting that check from the federal government.
But what I'm hearing is, we agree we should be in a position to receive that money if it's available.
We are as soon as he finishes the last appropriation, not the next one. That's all I wanna say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bob, Johnny Zavino again.
Alright, quickly, John.
Yes, well, a question was raised to Mark and it, it never got answered, so, and that was, if you have this connection policy and so forth, would that include if the sewer line goes down the street, that the stub would be put over towards the property so that you didn't have to dig up the street again? And, and it got interrupted and it was never answered.
I thought he did answer, but I'm sorry, Mark?
No, uh, good, no, that was a good question by Mr. Vintresco. Um, all the sewer projects, since I've started, provide the stubs right to the property lines. So, they won't be digging up the street anymore. Uh, there's been projects in the past twenty years that they didn't do that and the streets just get destroyed throughout time. So, all the projects now will have the stubs going to the property lines.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Bob, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, alright. Uh, alright, I'm not seeing anybody else? So, uh, thank you everyone for the presentation, for the discussion, and we'll pick this up again next week. Uh, moving on, the next agenda item is West Street Properties. There are two subcategories for this. The first subcategory is to deal with some lots, um, compliance issues with general law chapter sixty-one B. Um, these are properties that the town has a right of first refusal on, there has been a transaction on them. Um, we've asked, the board has asked town council Jonathan Eichman to be present. And so, let's start this part of the agenda by asking attorney Eichman to give us a, um, an overview of what's happened to get us to the point where we are on this property and what the town's rights might be. Go ahead. Jonathan, are you here? You need to unmute yourself.
They're calling in from a phone, I believe it's star six, to unmute.
So, Jonathan, if you would, press star six on your phone if you can hear me. And-
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that prompt. Um, again, John Eichman, town council's office. Bob, chairman asked for a summary of what the situation is with respect to certain property on West Street. Uh, specifically at fifteen fifteen West Street. It's been identified as um, I believe a portion of what is now assessor's map thirty-seven parcel four, shown as plus one, two, three, four, when a plan that's on record in the registry of deeds, approximately five acres. Um, the town received a, this, by the way, the first thing to note is that um, this property pursuant to the assessor's records is classified for tax purposes as recreation land under general law chapter sixty-one B. When land is classified and the owner wishes to sell the land or wishes to accept an offer to sell that land or any part of that land to a person for residential, commercial, or industrial purposes, they are required to give the town written notice of their intent to sell and the terms of the offer they wish to accept. The town received uh, an initial notice of an intent to sell this property in December. Um, that notice did not contain the terms of the proposed sale. Um, under the statute, the town has thirty days in which to respond and, to the seller and tell the seller that the notice is incomplete. We sent a letter to the seller within that time period indicating that it did not contain uh, the terms of the sale. Particularly, uh, didn't contain a purchase and sale agreement, which if there's a sale, um, one is expected. Um, in January, uh, specifically, I think, received, you have the letter here, on January, um, just trying to get the letter up on the screen here, believe on Janu- or yes, on January twenty-second, um, the town was sent a second notice on the same property. Um, from the same seller, an attorney for the seller, the seller is, by the way, Gray Max LLC. Um, this notice included a purchase and sale agreement, giving the town the terms of the sale. However, um, that purchase and sale agreement was, by its terms, had already expired. Uh, in other words, the closing date was prior to the date of the notice. Um, we then again notified the seller that um, they needed to confirm that the agreement was in place and if it had been extended, that they needed to send us evidence that the agreement had been extended, was still in place. Um, we did not get a response to that email. However, we then discovered that in fact, before that second notice was sent, the owner of the property, Gray Max, had in fact sold the property to the buyer. Um, town had, obviously had not been given notice of that. The result of that is that, um, based on the records we reviewed, um, that is an unlawful sale. Property classified for purposes of, for tax purposes under the chapter lands cannot be sold without proper notice to the town and the terms of the sale and, once proper notice is issued, the town has one hundred and twenty days in which to decide whether it wishes to exercise an option to purchase the property or instead, whether it wishes to decline that offer. Of course, in this instance, uh, the town uh, never had an opportunity to consider an offer to purchase this property. The original notice was defective, the property was then sold. Um, subsequently, we returned, we received a purchase and sale agreement. So, at this point, the situation is, based on the record review we've conducted, is that property that was classified as chapter lands was sold without proper notice to the town in violation of the statute. The town, one thing to note is that the town, notwithstanding the sale, the town retains its rights under the statute and can enforce those rights against seller and the buyer. I think that's where we're at right now. Um, Mr. Chairman, if there's anything, any aspect of this I missed, uh, let me know and I'll fill you in.
Thanks, I'll open it to the board for questions, anyone on the board for council?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCrisky?
Through you to council is, um, I believe we've issued building permits and so forth. So, to enforce our position, uh, I, would we be able to issue injunctions on these building permits? And um, in your experience, what is the chance of the town's position to turn this back and, and be able to, to get that asset if we chose to?
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to Slakman McCrisky. Uh, Joe, there is, um, I do believe the town has a very good uh, legal uh, avenue here to obtain title to that property if it wishes. As I said, I think the town's rights to purchase that property remain in effect and can be enforced. That's the answer to your, the second part of the question. The first question is, with building permits having been issued, um, may the town revoke those building permits? Um, it's a more difficult question, frankly, there is no direct connection between why building permits are issued and whether the owner is in compliance with the chapter land statute. So, I don't see an obvious uh, way to say, yes, we have a legal basis for revoking building permits. But uh, it's something that I think it's worth evaluating as to whether the town should be issuing permits going forward to, in an attempt to essentially enforce uh, its intent with respect to this property.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that in, because it doesn't make sense if we're even gonna talk about this to allow the project to move on. We should invoke our rights and in that, if, if that's the case, uh, we would have in those rights the ability to stop any future building permits. Water permits, drainage, whatever, wetlands, whatever it is, they don't get anything until we resolve the case.
Yeah, right now, we are not issuing any permits on that property.
And have they challenged that at all?
Not that I'm aware of. So, I just wanna clear something up, because when, when, when I last discussed it with us, with staff, the answer to the question was there were no permits issued on that property. So, this was the first time, when Slakman McCrisky said so, that, that, that I heard there was a building permit issued. Can we determine whether there is or is not an outstanding building permit on either lot? I will confirm, but as, as of last week, as far as I knew, there were no permits issued for that lot. Okay.
Well, this, this was a phone call made to me and if, if it's not the case, great, that's a good news. Uh, but there was some, um, there was a one department head that was mentioned specifically that had worked on this and the potential that there was been a permit issued, so that's why I was asking that question. I didn't have the opportunity to, to talk with staff on it.
I'll check again, but, but last time I knew that, as I understood it, there had been nothing issued and I indicated at that point that going forward, there would not be anything issued until this was hashed out. But I'll confirm. Alright.
Right, and I guess my, my next question again, Mr. Chairman, through you to council, would be, would it behoove us to send a, a formal letter through council stating our position and um, and putting in that, that, you know, there, there wouldn't be any permits issued, there won't be applications viewed or anything like that, uh, until we resolve this. I mean, it's, I would imagine we should be doing that at a minimum.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, yes, I think that it would be appropriate for the town to send a letter to both the buyer and the seller, um, giving the town's position on this issue right now.
Mr. Chairman, when we're ready, I'll make that motion.
Alright, I did notify the, we did notify the owner of tonight's meeting, it was only fair. I can't tell if they're in on the call or the meeting, but let me ask if there's anyone participating in tonight's meeting on behalf of Gray Max. I hear some, I hear some rustling of a phone, uh, on a phone number that ends in O-six. Um, is that someone wanting to speak or is it just a noise? Alright, so I don't hear any Gray Max wishing to be recognized. Um, Mr. McCrisky?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that uh, through town council, we notify both the Gray Max and the buyer of this property, of the town's intent to exercise uh, their rights to the property as defined in the, oh, I forgot what the document was called, but uh, that we wanna reserve, we're gonna take up our rights to, to talk about this.
Can I, can I try to refine that a little bit with you?
Whatever you wanna do, as long as it's the same thing, Mr. Chairman, you've been working on this a little longer than I have, so it's-
Alright, so, the first motion that might be appropriate is a policy by the board that no property that is transferred in violation of the town's rights under chapter sixty-one B will be eligible for or receive any permit.
Yeah, you can, you, you, you can add all the lawyer talk you want, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make that motion.
And then, and the second one would be that, for town council to notify this owner of that policy. Is that a-
That'll all be, that'll all be certified and so forth, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure council doesn't do it any other way. So, if, if you will accept that as the phrasing for your-
Yeah, that is my motion, that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not yet. On the board, on the motion, is there any discussion?
Hey?
Hello? I hear somebody trying to speak on- Alright, Peter, this is not, this is not open for comment at this time, so we'll try later, okay? Alright, on the motion. Uh, no debate coming from the board, on the motion, I have to do this roll call, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, council, do you need anything else in addition to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, as I understand it, the direction is to put together and send. Obviously, I'm gonna have um, the town manager and you review this before it goes out. This would be a letter to the seller and to the buyer informing them of the town's rights, they violated the statute and that the town will um, do, essentially take whatever action is necessary to prevent development by permit or otherwise on this property.
There you go. Alright. So, um, moving on to item B. There's a request to acquire this property, uh, and then a related or nearby property from the open space committee. This was brought forward by John Linehan, who's chair of the open space committee, so I'd like to recognize John. I know he's here, because I just asked him to wait a second.
Thank you, Bob, I am here. And uh, I was just trying to interrupt on the last one, because you might have wanted to include chapter sixty-one A in that motion as well as B.
But- Well, I can't, because all we put on the agenda was sixty-one B.
Gotcha, thank you. Uh, this piece of property, uh, this twenty-four point six acres is uh, map thirty-six parcel fifteen and it's assessed at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe it's on the market, I don't believe, to our knowledge, there is not yet a, a buyer, there could be. I, we, we've tried to make contact, um, but it is for sale. Now, this property, as far as I understand, in the latest, is not under chapter sixty-one A or B. In the latest is not under chapter sixty-one A or B. And, uh, so it, it doesn't have the right of first refusal. However, this is a unique piece of property geographically in that it fits perfectly. Into our existing Bird Street Conservation Area. It's, it, it, you know, really dives into the middle of it and will. Forever develop. And it's currently used as conservation property. Uh, there are trails through it. It's very much considered, uh, by everybody who doesn't know where the property lines are as part of it. It's, it's been the highest priority on the, uh, acquisition list for a long time. I think we have the opportunity here to act prior to a developer acquiring this property. By making an offer and, uh, obviously that can only go up to fair market value. I believe I heard they were asking four hundred thousand dollars and that seems like a reasonable price for twenty-four point six acres. And it is, as I said, uniquely positioned relative to our other conservation properties and, and make them complete. And I think, uh, this is one of those few times I know we've received criticism in the past. For being reactive and then having a developer involved as well, where we end up paying a premium needlessly. And, uh, so it has, uh, it, it has been unanimously supported by the open space committee. And the CPA, uh, the CPC, which I serve on as well, is, uh. I think there are many members interested there as well. We've actually got a meeting tomorrow night where I have asked it to be put on the agenda. But I think we should really try to move quickly on this while it is for sale. And, um, I was under the misimpression previously that it was chapter sixty-one A or B protected. It is not. So, uh, I think it's just a unique opportunity for the town at a very reasonable price and, um. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, John. Any, any, any questions?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Willingham, thank you very much for the, for, for the presentation. I appreciate the, uh, the work that you've done with the, uh, uh, conservation commission. Open space as well, uh, as well as CPC. Uh, to that end, um, would this, uh, be eligible? In accordance with the understanding to CPC funding?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, just to reiterate, what, what that means is that even though we're, we're going into, um, uh. Financially uncertain times, uh, the CPC, uh, already has these finances available for a property like this. And it, it wouldn't have no impact, impact on the town's other finances.
That's correct. And, uh, you know, I, I would see as we've done with most other properties, we would probably want to bond it. Although I shouldn't speak for my fellow members. But it is something that will benefit the townspeople for generations to come. Especially the young people of town and, and I think in the current COVID crisis. We've seen how incredibly valuable these open spaces are to people where they are not on top of each other. They can be. Well spread out and, um, enjoy some very valuable family time together. We should also talk about the health benefits of open space. I won't go off on a rant, but, um, both mental and physical. That, uh, we're getting too short of in our, in our town. And I think having, this is a rare opportunity and, and with it for sale, we should, uh, move quickly. I, I would like to take it to the, uh. The, um, I don't have an application done for the CPC yet. But I would like to, uh, if I could go to them with a straw vote of the, the board just supporting us. I think it would go a long way with, with the committee.
Thank you very much for all the work that you're doing for the town. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, John, does your group have any, um, any view about, uh? The four, the, the five acres we just talked about, the Graymax property?
Yes, that was also, the open space committee also voted unanimously to support it. The CPC did not vote on it because they had too many questions, um. And so they, they didn't know how to, how to move on it. And I think you, you might recall that, uh, I forwarded all those questions. We got a few of them answered. There, there are still some outstanding and. Uh, but, uh, the, the CPC never voted on it and, uh, sort of, I believe continued it.
Okay. So. Is there a sense that the CPC would look favorably on acquiring? The Graymax property as well as the Dry Pond Realty Trust, the twenty-four point six acres?
Yes, I, 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 um, hate to speak for them, but I think especially if, if, uh, they felt that, uh. The board had support. I, I, I think that they felt like it was a good price even for the Graymax property with what we had heard earlier. Uh, about what was the offer on it? Um, I can't speak for them. I, I know there are diverse opinions just, but I, I think there are a number of people. Who, I think the, the twenty-four acres has more support, but I think the, uh, four point nine five acres. Is, um, I think it's, it, it personally, I think it's very important to the town in, in terms of town aesthetics. And now I just got a notification that my battery is running low.
Well, that'll speed things up. A- any other comments from the board? Or questions?
What was the, Mr. Chairman, what was the price on the Graymax property?
The.
Yeah. Do you know what it's looking for?
The price that we had heard previously was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Five acres.
Yes, I, you know, I don't know what it actually sold for in the end. That was what they said that offer had been for.
Mr. Chairman, town council.
Miss, sure, go ahead.
Uh, the price in the, in the purchase and sale agreement that we received was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as John reported. Uh, and it's also accurate to note that, uh, we don't know for a fact that it sold for that price, but that's the one price that we've seen.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zamanian, I haven't opened it up. Pass the board.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board? All right, Mr. Zamanian.
I can answer the question that, um, town council just brought up. I have a quick claim deed on January tenth, twenty twenty, recorded at two forty-seven P M. Page number, book number three, seven, five, one, four, page number three, seven, four. Uh, Graymax LLC sold the property to Stoughton Residence LLC for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
All right.
I do have a further question if I have permission to ask it.
Fine with me.
Okay. Um. Town council said that they received a P and S on January twenty-second, twenty twenty from Graymax's lawyer. I'm a little confused why the lawyer from Graymax would send. A P and S to the town twelve days after the property was sold. I don't know if that's something that can be answered or not. It's obviously something that I had grave concern over with this property. One of the reasons, um. You know, that I brought this to the town in the first place. It wasn't necessarily my opposition. Or support of purchasing the property as much as it was the fact that the property had been sold in mortgage. So. Does town council have any opinion or can he shed any light on? Why he received a P and S twelve days after the recorded sale?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to address that?
If, if you have an answer, I don't know if you can explain the reasons of somebody else to do something.
Yes, I have an answer and it's exactly that, which is I really have no idea why this got sent other than that there may have been some. Miscommunication between council and the parties here.
Okay, it's a pretty big oversight on the lawyer's part, but I'm not, you know, town council is right. He can't answer for that.
And, and I don't think we have to spend time on that because we've heard very clearly that doesn't affect the town's rights. So the question tonight is not between the buyer and the seller. It's whether the town wants to do anything and we've got a request by. Open space that supports the acquisition of this and the twenty-four point six acres. Do you have a position, uh, have a suggestion for the board on what we should do with that?
The twenty-four acres?
Either one of them.
I am, no, I, I mean, the CPC hasn't made a decision on either property. We don't even have an application as of yet for the second piece of property. Although Mr. Linehan said he was going to be bringing that forward. And just like him, I couldn't speak for the board. So.
Okay.
That will remain. I know we have a meeting coming on the twentieth of May, not tomorrow night. Um, there was an email apparently sent out about that, but from Mr. Linehan's information. But, uh, no, we'll look at it and we'll make a decision.
All righty. So this is not a public hearing, uh, but I appreciate you weighing in on this. Thank you.
And I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
All right, um, uh, is there any more information the board needs to hear on this topic? Anybody? There's any action the board wants to take on the request by the open space committee? To acquire both of these sites using, as I understand from Mr. Linehan, community preservation funds.
Would you be looking for a motion to support that application?
That would be if that's what somebody wants to do.
All right, I'll, I'll make that motion to support the open space committee's application to the CPC for the purchase of. Um, both the twenty-four point nine acre parcel and the five acre parcel.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. McCrisky, you had previously objected to the open space committee filing applications because you had described them as advisory to the board. Does, do I, do I remember what you said correctly or is there something you'd like to do with this?
Well, if the board's going to vote to allow them to bring that forward, Mr. Chairman, that, that's what it is. And yes, they are advisory. They were set up by the board years ago. It's an advisory panel to the board of selectmen. Uh, but if the board authorizes them to bring the application forward, then they'd be authorized to do so, as you know.
All righty. Any more discussion on the motion? Our hearing done, as long as you, you've got the, uh, the camera on you, Mr. McCrisky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, um. I will, um, with the board's permission, I will prepare a short letter of support for. The application and if the, John, if the committee, uh, prepares the application form, you can attach this letter on behalf of the board to your application to the CPC.
Thank you, Bob. I just got back on. My battery died.
Oh. Well, we voted, we, we voted and, and, and this will teach you to let your battery die. You, you, you got everything you asked for.
Fantastic. Thank you all very, very much.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item. Um, Mr. Kaby, uh, had a suggestion which we added to tonight's meeting. We have, we have a lot of work to do going forward. Um, and, and so he suggested the formation of an emergency advisory committee on the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, my suggestion, uh, is it's in the description of the item. Uh, that if the board decides to go forward, given how precious time is, that, um. Uh, to the extent there are people who would be considered, we mark up the appointments that we can make. If any, for next week, so this gets put together, um, quickly. Mr. Kaby, it's all you.
I appreciate it. Uh, as we all know, this is, we've, we have, uh, uh, no playbook for a lot of this. A lot of the decisions that we have to make. Uh, are, uh. Require creativity, uh, but they also require experience and depth of knowledge. That, to be honest, I, I think that, that, um, what we don't have. And, uh, and we, we need it to make, uh, informed decisions. Uh, a, a, a lot of information is provided to us. Through the channels that we have, through, you know, through the town manager, through, uh, 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 being able to speak with. Uh, people in our public health department, uh, and that is extremely, extremely valuable stuff. Uh, but, but they also have. Both of those groups and, and, and town offices in general, uh, have a lot on their plates, uh, with regard to. A- any sort of, uh, policies that, that the, the board may take up. Uh, we, we have a, a wealth of, of, of knowledge, uh, in our community. Uh, I've, I've spoken with, with a good number of people who I just happen to know are in public health or some area in public health. Uh, highly credentialed folks who, who, uh, are very interested in providing us this kind of support. And so, uh, though it's not on the agenda to, so we, we don't have any particular names, but, um, but. The interest is there, uh, and I think this would be, uh, useful for the board to be able to make informed decisions. Uh, we've all heard, I'm sure, as we've, we've, uh, gotten calls or communications from people. Um, you hear a lot of ideas, you hear a lot of thoughts and it's, it's just very difficult to figure out, you know, where. Uh, where the, the fruit is, you know, and, and, and where the fertilizer is, where, where the good ideas are. And where the ones that we, we can't necessarily move forward. And even things that seem very practical. Uh, from, from a layman's point of view, uh. Well, I, I, when I speak, I've actually spoken with experts, uh, they explained to me how, how nearsighted it, you know, some of these ideas might be. So I, I just think that we, we have this wealth of knowledge, uh, and an interest in, in, uh, in helping us. Uh, and my hope is that, that the, the board will support, uh, an advisory committee. Uh, I had in mind a couple of, of charges for them, things that we would be asking for them. Uh, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll go through those briefly just to give you an idea of what I, what I envision this to be. Uh, but I'm also obviously very interested in, in everyone else's ideas. Uh, first, and this is. Before I go on, I just really want to be, be crystal clear about this as I can, as much as I can be. That the policies of the board of selectmen, uh. They all too, um, provide guidance for operations, but they are not, uh, you know, we, we have to stay in our lane here. We have to make sure that we are, uh, doing our job and not somebody else's job. So I, I think that's really important to mention. Especially with regard to some of these requests. And, and so we have to make sure that the communication is, um, really good between. The advisors to the board of selectmen and anything that might be going on with operations. We definitely don't want to find ourselves. And with any sort of dis- disharmony that is unnecessary. So, um, but to that, that's something we can all communicate clearly about. Um, so that, that the ideas I had were, uh, a review of the current policies, uh, this, this committee or this board. Would review our current policies and provide essentially an audit, uh, of the board of selectmen policies and take a look to see the things that we are currently doing. Uh, where do they, where do they rate? Uh, are there, um, even with, you know. Ignore COVID, right? We have all sorts of policies in place, uh, about the way things that, uh, transpire. Can you look at those and, and in light of this very different environment we're in? Uh, provide us some insight into where we might be, uh, we might have gaps and issues. Uh, the second is to give, uh, given their expertise to provide policy recommendations. Uh, things that we should add, uh, things we should change, uh, things that we should remove, anything along those lines, any sort of policy recommendation. Uh, provides the information and, and the recommendation for us to be able to, to make an informed decision. Third, to provide, uh. There might be some pushback on this, but to provide formal responses to questions from the board of selectmen that were formally requested. I, I just don't, I, I don't want, these are our volunteers and I don't think we should just have a, um, a melee of questions. Uh, they're, they, they are making themselves available. I think we should, uh, get together essentially and decide the things we want to ask. And get some sort of a, of a, uh, of a written response, uh, much as we would with, with, uh, you know, town council or something along those lines where we're looking for. Uh, uh, a guidance that we can clearly understand and ask questions about. Uh, and those are the three, more or less the three things I had in mind. Um. And with regard to the, to the people involved, we have a number of citizens who, who have expertise. Uh, I've, I have spoken with, uh, I just, sorry, communicated through email to Dr. Marcus, uh, very briefly, uh, today, and, and he had some ideas of people in, uh, school functions that might also be able to provide helpful insights to us. Uh, and we certainly have access, uh, and people within town staff who, uh, who would also provide the kind of assistance we would need. So hopefully that's, that's helpful to everybody. We can go through names, um, as I mentioned, I've, I've been talking to a lot of people. Uh, if you'd like me to, to provide, uh, some ideas of the people I, who I had been speaking with and see where we want to go with that. I'm more happy to do it. If other people have suggestions, uh, I'm, I'm all ears. Uh, we have to, uh, we have to do this as right as we can. We're going to make mistakes. Everybody is. There's no playbook. Uh, but we need to make sure we don't make, uh, outright dumb mistakes. Uh, if, if they're gonna be mistakes, it's gonna be ones that have to be based on, on a, a s- a strong set of information and facts of, of, as we think, understand, as, uh, the experts understand them right now. So I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion so we have something to discuss?
Sure. So I, I would like to make a motion to form a, uh, a, a board that will be called the COVID nineteen Advisory Board to the Stow- Stoughton Select Board. Uh, they will be responsible to, uh, to review current policies and provide an audit of our current policies. Uh, they will also, with their expertise, provide policy recommendations. And formally, and, and sorry, finally, they will provide formal responses to questions from the Board of Selectmen that are posed, uh, as formal requests for answers. Or for information.
Would you include in your motion the size of this board?
Uh, that I'm a little bit more weary about. I think that, um, uh, we don't want it to be too big, but there's, there's a breadth of knowledge that we really need access to. Uh, just for the sake of at least getting something rolling, um, that makes sense. I would say, uh, the size of the board would, uh, we have seven seats altogether. Uh, uh, and perhaps we, you know, maybe nine, seven to nine, I think is, is probably where we would need to end up. So no fewer than seven, no more than nine at the, at the time being. We can always expand it later.
Alright, is there a second?
I will second this and discuss.
Uh, any discussion?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, thank you, Steve, for presenting this. Um, I just want to clarify that the work of this advisory committee will be to uh, report back to the board and that they'll be looking at policies of the board, uh, versus town operations.
Absolutely. That is, that is the intent. It, it, they are, uh, to advise us on our policies. Uh, not on, not on the policies of operations.
Okay, I just want that to be clear because I understand, you know, the town sets up basically the equivalent of incident command during one of these emergencies. Um, and so I wouldn't want there to be, um, either duplication of efforts or some kind of overlap that was out of place. Um, so as long as it's, it's for the board, um, I don't see any harm in putting this together. Um, sure, there's a lot of residents who have expertise or just want to express opinions based on what's going on and, and what they're seeing around town. And so to be able to look at this information and bring it back, um, I don't see any harm in that. Uh, I'm personally not going to volunteer for another committee, but I look forward to hearing what they have to say and listening to the feedback. Uh, having one channel through an advisory committee that we can formally present some information at these types of meetings is a little better than just going onto Facebook or, or one-off emails. So I think this could serve a valuable purpose and if it's not utilized or the pandemic clears up, um, then all the better. So, um, I don't see any harm in putting it together. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman? Well, I, I, I guess I'm at a loss. I don't understand if we're gonna be dealing with the policies, am I correct, the policies that deal with the COVID situation only? Is that what we're gonna be doing?
I heard it, that it would be advising the board on policies as they are affected by the COVID emergency. There may be things in our policies that need to be changed. My question is going to be, uh, maybe tug tiles in with yours, Mr. McCrisky. Is this a group we could look to, to ask for advice on when and how we conduct town elections and uh, if there's a manner within the authority of the Board of Selectmen, since the Board of Selectmen is the one that issues the warrant designating the date, time and place for a town meeting. Uh, how, how we do that to ensure public safety, those are two areas that, that I, I consider within the board's purview, and I'd wonder if those are places where Mr. McCavey's committee would function and help us out.
Well, a- again, I, I, I'm at a loss. I mean, we have staff. Uh, we have a town manager that's in control of this right now. I would be leaning to the town manager, the public safety people, the public health people, the fire department. Those are the people. I don't need a citizens committee to tell the Board of Selectmen what they should be doing. That's why we have staff. Uh, I am totally against having another layer of government, another committee, uh, because it waters things down. You know, and, and this is not one, when we're dealing with public safety, we have a staff that's been doing a fine job dealing with this emergency, you know, up to this point. And, you know, I, everybody's got ideas, but we don't always agree on them. And I go, agree with this one. I believe the town manager and her staff have been tested, you know, in a situation that's, you know, with no experience. And they have met the challenge in Stoughton for the good of the people. If they have a, you know, and this is where the separation of government comes in, is that the Board of Selectmen should support our staff. Okay, and don't forget, in our role as selectmen, the chart is very clear. We should be supporting our staff. If they need a policy from the Board of Selectmen that helps them do their job better, bring it forward. We don't need people from other areas and, and, you know, just making suggestions. We got elected to, into, integrate things that way. We should be supporting our staff. We should be challenging our staff. And when they need something, they should come to us as the people's representatives and say, if you would develop a policy that addresses that, that'll help us in this manner. I don't think there's a need for this committee. I won't vote for this committee. I'm gonna vote to support our staff and ask them, using their experience, tell us what you need from us. So that we can all do the, the good on behalf of all the people in Stoughton. I'm not questioning any motives or anything. It's just a difference of opinion. Is that I think we gotta go to the people that are on our front lines and ask them how we can help you by giving you policies that don't exist now. I don't think we need another level of government to do it, another subcommittee, another group. I mean, it's like every time we meet now, we're talking about another group to talk about something else. We got elected, let's do it.
I think that's, uh, perhaps, um, you know, a, a portion of that, I think is really extremely relevant. We, we did get elected. Ultimately, we're accountable for, for, uh, uh, what happens here. And understanding that, that the decisions we make are well-informed and town staff is outstanding. They, they truly are. But, uh, but, you know, the list I've compiled includes several people with PhDs, uh, who, you know, who are heavily involved in, in these questions. Uh, town staff does not have this expertise. Uh, they, they just simply don't. They don't, there's, I mean, just can I give you an i- idea, uh, even members of our, of our Board of Health, uh, who, epidemiologists, people currently involved, uh, with the, the Department of Health, uh, doing surveillance and research of infectious diseases, including COVID. Uh, clinical operations of farm pharmaceutical companies. Uh, policy analysts and dat- that, data scientists who deal with healthcare research. Uh, people involved with, with, uh, advocacy, uh, within the, um, uh, public health, uh, nonprofit domain. All, all of these areas are, uh, it would be unreasonable to expect town staff to be able to fill in, uh, this breadth of knowledge. And I, I think there's, there's more than that. But it ultimately comes down to our, our, uh, accountability for the results.
And that's, that's why I asked, the question I asked. Same thinking, Mr. McCrisky, where I, I don't want this to step on the toes of town staff and I don't want this to take over the operations that town staff is doing. Um, because as I mentioned, they, they've got it, they've got it under control and they've clearly set up, you know, a response team and that involves public safety and town manager and, you know, different, it's, you know, shift leaders and things like that. So they've, you know, there's, there's things that have been operationalized specifically to respond to the pandemic, um, that they're working on day to day and adjusting day to day as, you know, the governor and and the feds issue new declarations. So, um, if this is simply advisory and almost educational for the board, um, which it sounds like that's the purpose, then, then I don't see an issue with it. Um, it's just a way of compiling the information and being able to present it here in a different format. Um, as opposed to one member maybe reporting back. So it's an advisory committee and it's, you know, if we don't use it, like I said, then then all the better, but it, it sounds like we might get some valuable information out of it, in one way or, or another.
Well, I just don't, I don't get the idea of another committee if these people are available. It doesn't matter if they're advisory to the Board of Selectmen or if they were to call the town manager and say, you know, I, I can help you with this and I'd like to be included. Could I talk to somebody in there? Again, I, I don't want to tell staff how to do their job. You need to listen to this committee. Uh, how are we gonna pick this committee? You know, I mean, what experience? Are we gonna take applications in and go through all that again? Or do we have a handpicked few people just because they have a connection to somebody, they're the people we're gonna use? Uh, I, again, I, I don't agree with this at all. I, I don't question the motive. Mr. Kaybee's got an idea. He believes it'll work. This is just a difference of opinion. And, uh, and I don't want to see staff being told by anybody, this is what we've got to do. If they want to have a conversation, the town manager can set those meetings up. That's staff's job. It's not up to us to put on them another committee so that they must meet with them. You know, there's, we're gonna break down a line of communication where staff and the Board of Selectmen, it's them against us. And, uh, and believe me, and that's, that is viewed by some department heads that have approached me. So I, I'm gonna stick with, let's let our staff do our job, their job. Let's not get involved with that. And if, you know, hopefully they'll get the tone uh, that Mr. Kaybee has people that, you know, would like to help out or may be able to offer expertise that we don't have or, you know, information. Staff should jump right on that. And if there's a policy the board needs to make, you know, we should have an emergency meeting and make that policy change, if that's the case of it helps here. But I just don't think this layer is needed. I really don't.
I don't hear this at all as a challenge to the town manager or staff. Um, I don't want to get too far out, but I think that if some layers of leadership above us had been more open to advice, uh, kind of the situations we're in might not be as dicey as they are. So if we've got people with expertise who could help advise us in the work we need to do as the chief executive office for the town, I think it would be a good thing. And if it winds up not, then, uh, we will have, we will try. Um, I don't see any mechanism, if this is advisory to the Board of Selectmen, for there to be any interference with the town manager. Uh, and I for one, w- w- you know, would not be, uh, well, I for one, if I found out, uh, that that was going on, you know, would want the board to intervene and put a stop to it. Um, but advisory, uh, uh, this kind of complexity, uh, I think it's a good thing to, that can only help the board. Uh, we all, I think, are getting requests by citizens for the board to take action one way or another. Um, it's only a matter of time before we're, we're, uh, we, we might want to take one of those things up. Uh, there may not be, this may not be something within the area of expertise of town staff. And given the urgency of issues that come up with COVID, two things. Town staff has a lot on their plates. They might be, not be in a position to absorb new things within the time we ask them to do. And we may need expertise the town staff doesn't have. So I see this as a tool to line us up, uh, for the betterment of the town. Um, so I'll, I'll vote for this.
Alright, question. Was any town staff asked about this, this issue prior to it coming up tonight? Did we at least ask their input?
Yes. I, I've spoken with, uh, I spoke with the town manager. I've spoken with, uh, Janice Bruce, who's the Executive Director of Human Services and also uh, runs our public health, uh, as obviously you know, from, from the, uh, Visiting Nurses Association as well. Uh, those are the two town staff that I, I've spoken directly to. Uh, I've also, uh, have, uh, as I mentioned, been in communication with, with Dr. Marcus, and he also supports a position like that. That's not obviously, uh, uh, sort of ancillary to your question, but I, I, I figured it's, it's relevant as well.
And the staff did, when they responded, did they feel they needed help? Did they say it was worth it?
Uh, well, this is an advisory board at the Port of Selectmen, so this isn't supposed to help that.
I understand that, but that's not the question I asked.
I never asked them if an advisory board for the, for them, for us would be helpful to them.
So an advisory board, okay, so an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen is basically gonna look to see if our town departments are doing the right job and then instruct us what we need to do. I mean, that's what some people, well, that's, but some people are gonna read into it because.
They do know.
McCrisky, if they read into it.
We don't even know who they're gonna be.
Yeah, but if they read into it, uh, we all tell them, uh, they're mis- misreading it. That's not what I hear the intent of this at all.
That's not the intent.
Okay, well, a difference of opinion, you, you know, and the votes will come down. Let's move on and we'll take the vote. Uh, I think it's wrong. Uh, I understand it's being made with good intentions. I don't have a problem with it. It's just, you know, it's a difference of opinion as to where some members of the board feel about interaction with staff and how I feel. So, uh, you know. Yeah, okay. No, it's difference of opinion, Mr. Chairman, that's all. You're not gonna win me over. We're gonna walk away disagreeing on this and that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not. I do want to clear that up though, because I, I'm not gonna support this if it is direct interaction with staff. I understand it to be an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen, a bunch of area experts, as Mr. Kaybee described, that will be basically educating our board, bringing information back to our board. I, I don't understand it has to be one-on-one interaction with staff and taking up staff time and working on staff operations. That's not the motion I understood that I seconded. And so that's, that's how I understand this advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. I asked the question almost three times to clarify that. And from what I understand from the in the motion, it's not gonna be interacting with staff. And so that's how I'm gonna vote. If, if it's not, that's not true, then I'm gonna vote for it.
No, I'm not saying it. It just, it, it, it just, to me, it's not needed because we have staff doing the job. So we're gonna listen to people, give us advice.
We're repeating ourselves. I think we're good.
Well, no, no, we're, I know what we're doing, Bob. I'm just gonna make my point like three other members have made the point for it. I'm gonna make my one point against it. And it's just a total difference of opinion as to how some members view the board and the actions of the board and how it's viewed by staff. Okay, there's a lot of other things, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, you probably know as well, that staff cha- it really questions the board. I get people asking me questions and again, I just respond with, I vote my conscience and I can't speak for anybody else. I don't, I, I just don't think this is an issue right now. I think if it was needed, we would have the right people come forward. I don't need somebody to give me advice to tell me what my staff should be doing. That's why we pay them. So I'm all set. I'm ready to vote.
Alright. On the motion, Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Kaybee?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright, so, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCrisky?
Was this discussed prior to, uh, a vote tonight at all?
Was what discussed?
This issue we just voted on?
I just was asked to put it on the agenda.
Alright, because if it re- I would believe it doesn't, uh, go past the open meeting law where a, a vote was gonna be taken. So it should have been properly put on the agenda to be voted, so that, you know, people would know we were gonna talk about this tonight.
I amended the agenda.
When?
Deb sent out an agenda with it on it.
Okay, then I must have missed that one. So that went out in accordance with the open meeting law?
It did. It qualifies, in my view, as an emergency item added to the agenda to deal with the COVID. I did not place anything on the agenda concerning the appointment of any members of this committee, since I'm not sure that would quite qualify as a, as an emergency issue. But in order to get this going, to see if we wanted it, I thought it, time was appropriate and I amended the agenda.
Yeah, and what was the town manager's response in this? Because I'm, now I'm even questioning emergency, because if we didn't seek advice of our staff, how do we declare an emergency? One person's opinion of this, you know, is difficult. So, um.
Governor declared a state of emergency. You can't tell me with a straight face that we don't have a state of emergency with respect to.
No, no, I understand that, but you're, but you're doing something that isn't been, hasn't been discussed by the governor. So all I asked was, does the town manager feel there was a need? Did she, was she consulted? And it, I mean, because that would mean there was a discussion before this was brought up. So where, what discussion have we had? Are we just throwing this and saying, we had, now have an advisory board for the board? Or, you know, was staff consulted?
Yeah, Joe, Joe, we've taken a vote on the motion. Yeah, Joe, Joe, we've taken a vote on the motion. The item is closed. We'll revisit this next week.
Okay, well, you, you'll do it. I'll look at it tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Um, the next item is town elections. Um. As we indicated last week, this would be an item that we would keep rolling on the agenda. Um, I have nothing new to report on town elections. I'm not sure, given the state of things, there's anything new. On the public health front, but if anybody wishes to bring anything forward on town elections.
Mr. Chairman, we, we, we do need to set a date. I, the clerk is indicating that she does need a date soon. To be able to put proper dates on ballots. We are ordering uh, everything we need to for safe socially-distanced elections, as well as promoting mail-in. Applications, but I do think at some point relatively soon, um, the board is gonna need to and, and, and really, we were kind of hopeful for tonight. Because the other thing in question is the warrant book will have to go to the printer relatively soon for the June twenty-third town meeting. And we need the election specifics in the book. I don't know that there's been any legislation relaxing that.
And if I, uh, this is uh, Stephanie, the uh, interim town clerk for the, for the town. I just want yous all to know that you have till June tenth is the possible last day that you can make. Um, a vote on this, because that would mean you would have to have the election on June thirtieth.
Okay.
And um, also. I'm, you must remember that prior to the election. Ten days prior, I have to send out the notification to every voter. Uh, to the, uh, members of the voting public, that I have to make, um. The charter amendment, because we have two questions on the ballot, and I have to notify the, the voters what it is. So I have to send out a, a big packet to households, and I need time to do that. So I really need yous to make, uh, pick the date soon. Hopefully tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCrisky.
Hearing from the town manager and the interim town clerk, I make a motion that we have the election on Tuesday, June ninth.
Is there a second?
Wow.
I just wanna make sure that I'm not making a mistake, because I don't hear anybody. Um. I have not seen anyone wi- with a second. Is there a second? Alright, so the motion fails for lack of a second.
Wow. Way to support your staff, everyone. Unbelievable. Wow, I can't believe it. Anybody got another motion to make? We're gonna let our staff hang out there again?
Sorry, Joe, I've been recusing myself from every one of these votes, so I'm not gonna.
I understand that, Christine, you know, and I should, I should have, I should have said that. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, please insult us together. I appreciate that. It's not that we don't support you, Stephanie, and town manager Robin. I apologize. But we definitely need to pick a date soon. I agree.
No, I, I, I understand. Thank you. I, 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 I know the board supports me, but this is, um. I, I, I'll, I'll have to consult with, um, Michelle Tassanari at the uh, state level, just to see. Um, if I can get any additional information from her to see if anything's been extended. Um, and I can get back to you in an email. I can email her tomorrow and, and let yous know if there's anything has been changed and if June thirtieth is the drop dead date. Okay?
That would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Alrighty, on town meeting, um. Dr. Grimm did send around her, her list we had put on to this week, reviewing her list of warrant articles to defer or remove. Um, has anyone, everyone had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Alright, so, Dr. Grimm, do you wanna walk through what your recommendations are for us?
Sorry, getting old and need to put on the glasses. Um, so most of these, Mr. Tisdale and I, uh, went through this list. And Mark then spoke to most of the directors that were involved with this, or all of the directors that may have been involved. And what we did was, we did our best to shave the list down, particularly money that would be free cash related. Uh, we wanted to try to be sure that we had, um, that we didn't spend any extra free cash. The questions come up about twenty-one on a whole host of areas, and my effort on this has been. My effort on this has been to, um. Try to keep our twenty-one budget intact, but to look at holding on to as much free cash as we can. And, um, um, and basically work not to overborrow where we don't have to. So if you look, what we, what we recommended in the gray, I believe your sheet should have some highlighted areas. We've looked to pull back on certain capital items, capital purchases, so for instance, only one staff vehicle for fire. Um, we look to postpone the protective equipment and gear, the diagnostic tools and equipment. And these, again, the fire chief has supported these recommendations. Um, the F-two-fifty pickup with the plow, the medium-duty dump truck with the plow, we've looked to postpone. Um, and again, this might be just till fall town meeting, until we have a better sense of, of what's going on, uh, with, with the COVID situation. The COA painting and repairs, sinks and fixtures can wait. The stormwater upgrades, uh, and the mill and overlay of the parking lot at DPW, we can hold. The scrape and repaint at DPW, all of the town hall repairs. Park Street Sewer, of course, we put highlighted, but that, it, it obviously is a, is a broader type of a decision. Uh, the public safety building, we did recommend at this point to postpone to a fall town meeting, because we haven't had a, a chance to really keep moving on those meetings. Pratt's Courtwell investigation can wait until fall. Um, the senior exemptions aren't a huge amount of money, but we could wait until fall. But again, depending on the situation that our seniors are in right now, um, the board may want to consider still keeping those. That's the list in general. We, we, we're looking to keep the zoning articles on, because a lot of those are what are gonna be. Um, critical if developers do come in and see some opportunity with, with interest rates being so low. We wanted to be able to have our, our zoning work going forward, so that we could have projects ready to go with zoning that we feel is, is. Is really appropriate for the town, and to make it better for development in the town. Uh, but basically what we're looking at is those capital purchases, and I, I've told you before with the five-year plan, the philosophy is always to. Sort of purchase as we need in an ongoing rotation, so that we never build up. I'm not looking to eliminate these purchases for, for two years, simply to postpone until fall or maybe one year forward. So, we're not looking to not purchase these. We're very hopeful at come fall town meeting, uh, which most likely we will have, that we will. Um, look to make these purchases again. But in the short term, uh, and the town manager vehicle, uh, the pool vehicles, I also pulled off that list. So generally, most of it's in the capital purchases and facilities repairs that, that we've decided to pull back. The DPW director has asked that we keep the salt brine machine on the list. I think that that's important. That's something that protects us and ensures that we have our own, uh, road treatment. And we're not relying on other communities, and, and frankly, if we have enough, we may even be able to sell it. And we have a portion of the equipment for that, and we just need the final equipment on that, so we did leave that in there. Um, I know I ran through these quickly, but again, they're, all the department directors who are involved have agreed that they could hold six months to a year on all of these things. If they have to. We also wanna streamline the voting. Um, I met with, um, Mr. Mullen and Ms. Fleming. Uh, Friday afternoon, and I believe that, uh, they're on the line as well. And, um, one of the things we did look at is streamlining, just because the logistics of town meeting are gonna be a little bit tricky. We're working on it, and we have some good ideas. We have another meeting Friday, but the less things that we have on this, uh, outside of the budget and the zoning articles. Probably the better, because it, it is gonna be a little bit of a complicated town meeting. Now, take any questions on any of the articles.
Dr. Grimm, can I, can you just help me out on the town manager vehicles?
Yep.
Would remove them or reduce them to one?
I would remove those. I'd postpone those till at least fall or next spring. That was to implement the pool car policy.
Okay, and it was the fire staff vehicle you reduced from two to one?
Yes, we just purchased one right now.
Okay, thanks.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, the town manager, what was the change in, um, the total? And how much free cash, um, was reduced? Being used? Sorry, I, I phrase that question horribly.
Yeah, and I think, I think my notes for that, maybe on my desk, but hold on, I can figure for you. Almost all of the free cash, I believe, was removed from that. Everything that, almost everything that was borrowed under free cash, I believe, was pulled. I will confirm that. I can get you guys an email on the, the specific on that. But I think we got rid of almost all of the free cash items, I believe. Mr. Tisdale was on there. He, if he's still on, he may. Know better. Um, I can get you the total of everything, but it was that, it was basically that, almost that. Wa- uh, between free cash and borrowing, I think we had about one and a half, two million, I believe, that we were looking at, and we reduced a good hunk of. Okay, um, do you know what, this was mostly the free cash, Mark? Just one.
I think that, that column up, but it looks like it's, it's just north of a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, seventy, forty-one, twenty-eight-hundred, sixty-four-hundred, ten thousand, so it looks like maybe a hundred twenty-five thousand ballpark of free cash.
That was saved?
Yeah.
And what are we doing with the free cash? Cause I would suggest making a, um, COVID reserve fund or something, uh, with that remaining free cash. Um, just so that we have it in the event our revenues are down.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be very supportive of that and, and, you know, hopefully going into next year, if things look better or things look okay. Um, depending on what comes in from the feds and the Commonwealth, then, you know, we can go back to purchasing what we need to, to next year. So, I, I mean, I certainly would be in favor of that. I, I just don't wanna expend money. We don't absolutely have to right now. We wanna hold a little bit in reserve for exactly what you're referencing.
Yeah, it would essentially be that. It would just be, you know, COVID emergency reserve or something. Um, and then. Otherwise, if it goes into, you know, FinCom reserve or something, we have. I don't know how we'd word the motion, so that you could use it more freely. I don't know if Bill Rowe has a, um. Has a, um. An opinion on this, or comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill.
Hi, Bill. I was hoping you were there.
Okay, alright, so here are your free cash articles. Uh, three marked cruises, a hundred and eighty thousand. One unmarked cruiser, fifty thousand. The fire radios and communications, thirty-five thousand. Uh, the diagnostic equipment and tools, ten thousand. The town manager, two vehicles, seventy thousand. COA painting and repairs, forty-one thousand eight seventy-two. COA sinks and fixtures, two thousand eight eighty. DPW flooring, two thousand eight thirty-four fifty. Uh, town hall, uh, fan coils, sixty-four hundred. Pipe installation, two thousand eight eighty. Uh, sinks and fixtures, three thousand three sixty. And then, uh, Article thirty, uh, lake management for thirty-five thousand. So those are your free cash. Some of those that were, uh, were mentioned on that list. I don't have that list. But I think some of those that were mentioned on that list were for, for, were borrowing articles.
Yeah, a, a, a few of those free cash are still in there. I believe the radios are still in there. And the protective equipment, I believe. The diagnostic equipment is gone. So a couple of the free cash articles are still in there. I believe we had three hundred and so in free cash, and as Mark said, about a hundred twenty-five got pulled. So it, it was, it was just around fifty percent of all.
Yeah, there's three point six million free cash to share, and three point two is used for the operating budget. So say about four hundred thousand of free cash is for articles. But we're keeping the one hundred eighty thousand for the police cruises and the fifty thousand for the one unmarked cruiser. Um, and we're keeping thirty-five for the radios and communications. I'm just kinda naming the bigger ones.
Yep.
And thirty-five thousand for the lake management.
Are, are you deleting, uh, do you wanna delete even DPW flooring, cause that didn't come out highlighted on what I have?
That was left in there. I, I think they feel there's still a need for this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, we don't wanna do, we don't wanna leave anything that, that would cause further destruction on these buildings that are gonna cost us more down the road. We didn't wanna defer anything that is holding something together right now.
A twenty-eight-hundred dollar item.
E- exactly.
There are a few that I have, uh, questions about, but I don't, I don't wanna derail, derail anything. Do we have a, a moment to cover a few?
Mr. Kaby, go.
Uh, so thirty, uh, hopefully you're able to hear me okay. I had to change over to a different, uh, setup. But the, um. See, I think thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three. All cover some, some areas of tax relief or, uh, yeah, tax relief for seniors and veterans. Uh, generally, pretty non-controversial, and, uh, even though they, they would still be applicable if they were, uh, addressed. At a later town meeting, they'd be applicable in the current tax year. Uh. We just wanna see if there's, there's, you know, if there's a reason not to include those now, just more or less get them, uh, knocked off. And, and to show that there's, there's, um, uh, support for that kind of aid to seniors and veterans.
Uh, the, as we said, those are sort of highlighted more for discussion purposes. A few, I think we talked about it, um, the, the estimated cost on those are in the draft warrant. And they're not extremely high in cost, but there is a little bit that we were gonna have to play with on the overlay, and I know we're a little concerned about that. Um, but, uh, again, I would defer to the board. I think that that's sort of a, a, a board philosophy question at this point, given everything that's going on. If you still wanted to keep those in place, because those are, um, populations that, uh, you know, potentially. Are, uh, are vulnerable to, to financial situations right now, fixed income veterans, et cetera.
Yeah, town, town meeting tends to support these unanimously minus two. Usually get a couple of people who, who will vote against them, but, but it's, it's fairly uncommon. Um, but obviously, we'd have to put it before them. For all I know, it's, it would be unusually, uh, problematic this year. Uh, and just be a surprise to me, but I, I appreciate your input.
Anyone else on these items? Joe?
No, sir.
Well, we just had a presentation on, uh, why we should buy Article forty-six. It hasn't gone before CPC, why we should buy the Graymax, uh, property that we put a placeholder in for Article forty-six. That would be CPC money. You, you highlighted that.
Uh, again, for discussion purposes, I think one of the other things is it wasn't just about money. I think town meeting, uh, when we talked to the moderator as well, was looking to just see the free money, yeah.
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 I think on some of these, it would be helpful to find out where the standing committee recommendations might be, because that. That tends to influence how town meeting will go. For example, if we have a strong recommendation. On Article forty-six, which is the Graymax property from CPC, and FinCom supports it. Um, it might be something that makes sense to put forward or not. Um, if we have a number of, uh, the standing committees supporting the senior and veterans. Tax relief that make up Articles thirty-nine to forty-three. We might wanna keep those, just because they could, uh, they could go. There's one concept floating around on town meeting. Uh, a- about having the equivalent of, um, what we do on consent agendas, where items that, uh. Um, w- would be passed as routine matter are bundled together and voted up or down. Um, that way, that might make things work, um, work quicker, but. Large capital items, to the extent we can, we should defer. Um. And we should preserve our cash.
Uh, I believe municipal operations is the only group that had met for votes. The other ones have not, as I understand it.
Yeah, do we know if FinCom has taken any votes on the, on the senior and veteran tax relief?
I don't believe they have. I think they were gonna have votes taken, uh, Wednesday and Thursday this week. I believe.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is Johnny Zavino. We haven't closed our hearing yet, so we haven't taken any votes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Alright, so does anyone wanna do anything tonight on these recommendations?
Uh, o- other than just contemplate them, I think, I think, uh, I think for tonight, I think we should just really, um, kind of absorb this. Generally speaking, I think that, uh, uh, we're in general agreement that, that many capital items, it makes sense to, to, to defer to a later time. Uh, and then there's just, there's a handful that seem a little bit, uh, let's say less, less, um, obvious perhaps with, uh, including the ones we've just discussed, uh, the Graymax property, forty-six, and perhaps, uh, some of the senior and veteran relief, uh, concerns. If, if they could be bundled up, as I mentioned, I think that those are usually fairly non-controversial, so, uh, so if we can essentially have them together, that'd be great. Uh, on the other hand, uh, you know, the main concern here, which we really have in sight of, is that people are looking to get in and out of this very quickly. And, uh, even though these might be not controversial and very quick to go through, it still chews up time just going through the motions of voting. And, uh, if we can, if we can do this in one day instead of two, uh, that, that is, um, will have a benefit to all of our health. Uh, one way or the other. So, so, um, I'd like to get a little more information about, uh, about those. With the time being, I, I, I would feel comfortable deferring all of the capital purchases. The town staff have already identified this as being deferable.
Alrighty, so we'll keep, we'll roll this into next week as well.
If, 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 if I may, that it just, just to be aware, the book will have to go to print. Reggie will have to get a draft to Lauren and KP before that. If worst case scenario, if, if these things are all in the book, we'll just have to let people know that we're pulling certain articles, that's all.
Well.
Same as we do with labor contracts.
I, 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 I get the sense that, uh, that, um, the recommendations on the borrowing articles are generally supported. The re- recommendations on the free cash articles are generally supported, and there's a few others that people would defer on, uh, until we know more. Someone wants to make a motion on the ones that we think we're going to defer on and chop those off, um, that might be appropriate.
I'm comfortable doing that. I just want to make sure that we get these, uh, I'm going to write down the, um, the article numbers. I like, I want to make sure I don't mess them up. Uh, and just run them by, um, Dr. Grimm as well, just to make sure that I have the right, all the right information. Um, these copies are pretty good, but I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything that's highlighted. So we have twenty-three B one.
Yeah, we do, we do one vehicle. Yes.
Twenty-three C one. And so twenty-three B one was a reduction to one vehicle instead of two?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's the new amount on that? Is it fifty-five thousand?
Yes.
So I said, start over again. Twenty-one, uh, B one is reduced to one vehicle, uh, and we're looking to defer twenty-three B five, twenty-three C one, twenty-three C three, twenty C, sorry, twenty-three D one, twenty-four A, twenty-four B, twenty-four D, twenty-four E, twenty-four G, twenty-four K, twenty-four L, twenty-four M. And then for the time being, we'll leave twenty-seven. Thirty-three, thirty-six. And we'll leave for the time being thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-six. So, uh,
Yes.
So I'll take that as a, I'll take that as your motion, Mr. Kevy.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question for you, Mister Chairman. This is Johnny Anzavino.
Hello, Johnny Anzavino.
Uh, your agenda said that you'd be taking public comment on these. I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you ask for any either on the election or this one, but um, I just wondering if you were going to take public comment or?
I will if you want to, sure.
I know in this particular case, talking about what might come off, I, I don't know if you are aware, the, uh, Senate President had indicated some bad news that they think they might lose seven hundred million dollars this year in tax revenue. Uh, the good news was they weren't looking to, um, have any cuts to local aid or to the Chapter seventy funds. However, but for twenty-twenty-one, you're looking at a shortfall of between four and six billion dollars for the state revenues, which I'm sure is going to, uh, trickle down to the cities and towns. And I, I know you're talking about Warren Articles and taking things out, but to date, even when we've asked, we've been told we want to move full steam ahead with the budget as decided before all this mess hit. And does the board or the town manager, uh, expect that they're going to be looking at this budget and making any changes? Or is that just going to be lucked up to whoever goes forward with it?
Mister Anzavino, I had asked that question last week, uh, about the FY twenty-one operating budget and if we're going to make any changes. And, uh, in order to inform that decision, miss, they're collecting information on local receipts. So Mr. Rowe indicated they should have year-to-date local receipts for me and for the board in the next week or two. Um, and so we'll be able to see the trend. I agree that state aid is probably going to be flat or less. So, um, and the town manager had replied as well to that, that, um, if things are looking bad for FY twenty-one, they'll come back in the fall or, or sooner with an adjusted budget. So, um, that was discussed briefly last week.
Well, I know, and it was, it's been discussed at the FinCom with this, this just came out Monday, um, from the Senate President that right now they are looking at a four to six billion dollar shortfall in revenue. So, um, you know, I mean, it is what it is, but I know it was also stated last week, I think you agreed with it, that waiting through half the year and then having to make the cuts is going to be a lot worse than if you had to try and do something upfront, but that's all. And, and the only other question I had is, is the date for town meeting still set as the twenty-third of June?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anzavino.
Uh, Mister Chairman, Bob Mullin.
Hi, hi, Bob. How are you?
Hi, good evening to everybody. Hey, so my count is, uh, I mean, I agree with Mister Kevy saying that. Obviously, we'd like to probably try to do town meeting in one night if possible. Depending upon obviously a lot of different things going on. If that legislation passes with virtual town meeting, and we got to figure out what software we'll use and so on and so on and so on. Are we, my count of what you're removing from streamlining the warrant right now, you got fourteen removing? Is that correct? Leaving forty?
I haven't counted. I haven't counted.
Those aren't full articles being removed. Some of those are individual, um, line items within the articles.
I stand corrected. Alright.
Yep.
So, Mister, um, Robin, uh, Dr. Grimm, how many articles, did anybody give a count yet?
No, it, it, right now it only reduces a couple of articles total because most of them, like I said, are, um, large portions within one article. They were those large articles on all of facilities, all of DPW and capital.
Correct.
You also will lose, um, you know, several of the collective marketing ones that are on there, we won't have contracts for, so we'll knock off a few of those. So we are trying to trim that down. A good number, probably a good, and Bill Rowe would know better than I, but twenty or twenty-five of them are our routine. You know, stabilization ones, things like that, that are routine ones. So I think we have a lot that are very quick votes. Um, it's some of the, the more controversial ones like public safety that we're nowhere near ready to really have that discussion, um, in, in a month and a half. That one, that one has been v- voted to postpone for now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Uh, Mister Chairman, if I may ask you just one more question. Is this going to be like the first, I mean, you have a meeting next week. You're going to take another stab at this or?
Well, if, if this motion passes, we'll know these are trimmed and next week if more get trimmed, more get trimmed.
You're going to keep working on it. Thank you very much. Whatever you can do, I appreciate it.
The only article may be to adjourn town meeting.
There you go. That'd be great. Can I quote you on that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you. You too.
Thanks.
Uh, anyone else on the town meeting article, uh, uh, or the town meeting agenda item?
Uh, Chairman, this is Gene Fleming, the acting town manager, uh, town moderator.
How are you?
I'm very good, thank you. I'm, uh, hoping that the board will keep the warrant to the budget, whatever needs to be passed before June thirtieth, and the important ones that you need to get done to a minimum. I think that it's a good idea for the town manager to have the warrant printed and sent out to all the town meeting reps in its totality. And then at town meeting or before, we can decide the articles that we absolutely can carry over to a, um, early fall town meeting, and we could wrap everything up then.
Sounds great.
Um, is there any chance since you didn't ask for any public comment on the town election, uh, that I could make a comment?
Yeah, that was my oversight. I'm, I'm, I had some deadlines. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit fried, so.
I understand. Um, I, I would just like to say that, um, I can't understand the reason for the selectmen not setting an election date. You have come to the point where you are making it almost impossible for the town clerk to meet her statutory requirements, mailing ballots, mailing information to the voters of the town. And it's not going to be the town clerk's fault if something happens because you will have to set a date. And you should set it as soon as possible. You're making it impossible for this town to have an election. So would you please reconsider your vote on setting a date for the town election? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, in, in that thing, um, you might, might be concerned with, uh, setting a town election. Has been the same with, 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 uh, with, happened, what happened the last time we did this. We, we were provided new information. Uh, things changed. Uh, things were changing very rapidly and, uh, constantly setting the resetting elections, uh, was a concern of mine. Uh, in, in light of, um, you know, of my, honestly, because of my respect for, uh, Ms. Fleming and her, her contributions to the town and her, obviously her work in the clerk's office and understanding of that role. I do make a motion to reconsider the, the vote to set the, um, town election.
Second. On the motion to reconsider, Mister McCrisky.
Yes.
Mister Kevy.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Howe.
Accuse myself, Mister Chairman. Thank you.
Motion to reconsider is adopted.
Uh, so I, I am, since, since I made the motion, I'll say that, um, uh, you know, my concerns, I, whether I'm right or wrong, uh, uh, in making that decision about seconding Mister McCrisky's, uh, motion, uh, I have to leave that to people's opinions. Uh, certainly wasn't to, um, showing disrespect towards this clerk's office or town employees in general, uh, as was suggested, but, but it is, but I understand his, his frustration with it. And, uh, and so I think that, and, and Ms. Fleming's frustration with that, and I'm sure that there's frustration of other people, including people who are currently running. My anxiety honestly was, was the same that I had, uh, I had from day one. I have registered the same opinion about this, and it's mostly ju- uh, just a concern that we will not, we won't be ready. And that, that setting dates and creating confusion, uh, will be a problem. We had, uh, a, a little bit of a, of a motivation to do it earlier because of the effect it would have on schools, when we are still hearing that schools were going to open on May eighth. Uh, when that changed, I, I think it provided us an opportunity to catch our breath, uh, and, and I'm certainly willing to, to re-entertain this vote. Because, uh, I, I don't, I don't want my anxieties about this to, to have that kind of negative impact on the town. Uh, uh, certainly I hope that people can understand, uh, that position, but, uh, but, but I do think that it's, it's appropriate to reconsider Mister McCrisky's, uh, motion.
Well, the motion failed for lack of a second. So somebody, if they want that motion to go forward, needs to make a motion.
Mister Chairman.
Mister McCrisky.
Make a motion that we hold the annual town election on Tuesday, June ninth.
Uh, well, dramatic pause, but I, I will second that, uh, that, uh, motion.
Alright, uh, for purposes of the record, Ms. Howe, are you, uh, recusing yourself from discussion on this motion?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Alright, so one of the things that I had asked when we discussed this before was for some sort of demonstration on what the poll sites would look like. That we have a, a video, some, something from staff to show, as you explained, how the voting would work, so we could see what the spacing was, what the places were, so, uh, because at least my concern is making a vote where a voter has to make a choice between exercising a right to vote at the risk of catching a potentially fatal illness or a poll worker going in and working the poll at the risk of taking, of catching a potentially fatal illness. Or if they don't catch it, they spread it, especially when the, the state is still at the state of contagion that it's in, which it's going to be in for a little bit longer. Um, so, um, do we, do we have a sense of where we are in being able to provide that demonstration?
We are in the process of still ordering, um, plastic shields that we would be putting up for our poll workers. We have ordered PPEs for poll workers. We have ordered several thousand masks. We're ready to put baggies together. We probably aren't quite at the point of a video yet because we're still pulling all of that together. Uh, but when we look at the numbers of potential voters or voters for potential turnout, it's most likely at most a couple of hundred voters per location over an approximately eight-hour span at the most. Um, and that's without us really promoting the mail-in ballots, which will absorb a good portion of it. Stephanie may have a better sense of that than I do. We, there, there, there's not a reason that we can't do this similar to what a bank is doing right now. Only two customers are allowed in at, at a time. The bank tellers have plexiglass between them and the customer. In this case, we would be adding gloves, a mask, and a pen for the ballot for each, uh, voter. So that's who we're at now. Paul's been working with Stephanie on ordering everything. We're continuing to order as if we're having this election sometime in June, presuming that we had discussed hopefully having it before town meeting. Stephanie, I defer to you on any, anything further. I know we've discussed a good bit about this.
Um, I needed, uh, a date so that I could figure out how many people I would need to work. I'm getting s- some good feedback from my poll workers. They're aware that they're going to be having special, uh, clothing protection, the shields, the mask. I was going to order what they call sneeze guards, uh, Mister Chairman. Uh, however, um, facilities is taking care of that for me. They're going to be making the sneeze guards, which will have, they'll be, um, tall enough, they'll be on a table. Um, the people will be standing on their mops. They'll be, uh, the poll worker will be able to slip the ballot underneath the sneeze guard. Um, also, there's police at every, um, location. So they'll be, you know, ushering so many people in and, you know, kind of like they do at Costco's. To come, to come in, to go out, and the next to go in. So it'll, it'll be like that. I feel that we are going to have a lot of mail-in ballots this, this, this time around, even, even for the local election because people, uh, uh, we're inundated with calls about when the date is. So, you know, I feel that, um, the town manager, myself, we're, uh, we're working together. We're working with the, um, acting moderator and- and the presumed moderator, coming up with ideas, um, for the election, different things that we can do. I mean, I'm just, I just need you guys to accept the date, and, um, once, once you do that and sign the warrant, it's now, I will say like my election to get everything done, but I will need, um, hopefully, uh, my staff can come back in and we can get everything ready that we need to go and have done prior to the election. And now that you, if you set the date for June ninth, I'll have ten days to allow people to come in and register to vote or vote, uh, register online, and I can process them. I mean, I'm coming in on the weekends, keeping up everything, so I, I don't know what else I can tell you.
Are you satisfied that the arrangements you're setting up for the conducting of the town election will provide a safe environment for the poll workers and the voters?
Yes, it, it, it's the best, it's the best that I can do, and, and Robin and I have talked about it, and, uh, we talked to Facilities. We're going to need extra tables at the polling locations, because I'll have to have, I, I'll have to have one to check in, uh, the clerk and the warden that usually sit at the same table. We'll have to have separate tables now, six feet apart. But, um, I'm pretty confident that they're going to be safe, and, uh, you know, some of them I didn't, the ones that I thought would work are telling me no, and the ones that, i- it's, it's the opposite, it's just like unbelievable. I'm getting good response from my poll workers, and my poll workers are my number one priority to keep safe, along with voters.
And if I, I could add, we're, we're, we're working with Janice Bruce closely on this as well. We are consulting with Janice on all of this as the public health person, you know, lead for us in town. She's following governors' or, you know, governors' protocols right through and what they're doing statewide, Commonwealth-wide. We are discussing what other towns are doing with other town managers, and Stephanie's on with other town clerks. So, I, I mean, this, let, let's say this would be far safer, for example, at any supermarket, far less interaction than any supermarket, um, far less interaction than, than even rolling down your window at the gas station, frankly, and, and, and or pumping your own gas and touching things, because you're actually going to have gloves, a new pen. You won't be touching anything that anybody else's hands have touched. So we're actually making a situation that's far less exposure than the few places that people are going. Clearly, people who feel that their health is severely compromised are most likely going to go with mail-in ballots, and I would suggest that they do, um, as I would hope they're probably not going to supermarkets either, for example. So if for the average person who's going out to market still and, and getting their essential supplies or a hardware store, this will be less interaction, less, less, uh, 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 contamination risk, if you will.
I mean, um, the board has the right to shorten the hours if they want, if they're concerned about health risks, but we do have to stay open till eight o'clock, as it's stated in our charter. There's not a start, you know, we can open up as early as six-thirty, but we always open the polls at seven, so it's a seven to eight day, um, unless you want to change the hours, but Robin and I had talked about that, and we thought that that wouldn't be a good idea, because there's some people that do have to go to work, and they want to do their, their election on, you know, their voting at, at seven in the morning and then go to work.
And the other thing is the more hours it is, the more, again, we spread out the number of people at any one time.
I have to treat this election like a presidential election. Because of the COVID, this, this more to do, but I think the turnout will be spread out through the day, and it's not going to be continuous. Also, the state is letting me, um, if I can't get, you know, eight poll workers at one place, I can have one check in, one check out. At the, like, at the, um, smaller locations, like, let's say precinct, um, eight, it's one of my smallest ones. I can have less people working there, but say at four and five, that's a bit, those two are big, so I, I would ha- want to have a full deck there. And that, that's, that's my plan.
All right. Anything else on the board, Mr. Kavy?
Yeah, yeah, so, so one of the, uh, uh, as I mentioned, we, we keep on getting new information, uh, and obviously, we're going to have to make any decisions we make based on what we know today, uh, perhaps that was my reticence, it was just an expectation that things would, would change, and that we'd have to make another decision based on new facts. Uh, that might happen, but it's not, it's not true today, uh, so we'll have to kind of move forward. Uh, on the other hand, I mean, I've actually pulled this up, I mean, New York Times was reporting that, that the number of cases is looking to double in June, daily cases. Two hundred thousand people a day in the U.S. with three thousand deaths a day in the, the month of June, that, this, this is when we're looking to do this. I, I mean, I, I understand, I, I truly understand that democracy has to furl on, and we, and we can't not have elections. But, my God, like, you know, ju- just with the things we know today, we know that the, the number of deaths is going to double to three thousand a day. Number of cases, uh, the number of infections is going to double to two hundred thousand a day. Uh, is, is this factored into the current, current model?
Well, y- yeah, I mean, I have to make provisions, and, and Robin and I have worked closely on this. If I ask about my time for an, for a date, I, I think she's going to lock me in a closet. I mean, we go back and forth with this every day. It's like, if you don't want to have it on the ninth, you have to have the election by the thirtieth. There's just no other way around it, but you're, you are tying our hands. And with the skeleton crew in there, I'm going to need all of Team A to, to work in the clerk's office to, to help me get stuff ready.
And frankly, at this point, if, if the governor on May eighteenth says we can start gradually, you know, pulling more people into town hall, the clerks or the part-time staff from the library to assist the clerk's office, splitting them into Team A and Team B, because it's going to come down so tight, because we also have the census going on right now. So there are a lot of moving parts, plus, plus my office and, and preparing the book for town meeting, and, and Stephanie preparing the operations of town meeting. Um, a- a- again, i- i- it's a board call, clearly, but if, if it has to be by June thirtieth, we're getting tight, and I don't know what happens if you don't have it by June thirtieth. I'm not sure that, with the...
I, I, I'm not sure, I'm sure that the state's not going to be happy with this. And, 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 and then, and then they're going to look at me and say, well, why didn't you do this? And I'm going to say, my town manager and I presented everything to the board. It's the board's ultimate decision to make the date, and then once you make it, then it becomes my election, and I have to run it. But until then, I, I can't do anything. I mean, we're in unprecedented times, and I understand that, but if you, you've got to, you have to remember that there is additional information that has to go out to the public, to the voters.
All right, so I'm going to support the...
The review did it.
I'm going to support the June ninth date, but I'm going to request town council for a ruling on whether as a condition for, uh, public access or some other, uh, control, given the public health risk, that the safety measures that you've designed may be placed under the, the board's authority, under, what is it, chapter one-eleven? For public safety, that the, that the voting location be governed strictly by those public safety measures that each voter must follow. What I, what I want to avoid is a spectacle of people, I don't want to have people being upset that their right to vote is being restricted, but I also don't want to have people assembling, uh, in derogation of others' public safety by thinking that it's okay for them to, uh, not be safe, and, um, uh, promote other people, uh, getting sick. So I'll ask for that ruling, and if that's where it goes, then I'll ask the board to amend the conditions for the election, so that as a, that the voting procedure will include each voter, um, being given a mask, being given, uh, a pen, being given gloves, and they must be worn throughout the election process, uh, so that in that respect, we can protect the public health and safety. But I can't do that, I don't have an opinion on whether that's something we can do.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Clemming?
Yes, um, I would just like to, um, allay Mr. Kavy's fears. Um, that model that he is discussing now about, you know, the cases rising in June is probably a very certain thing to happen. However, the later you set the date in June, if you stay with the June date, it makes it more difficult for people to think they're going to be safe. The town clerk and the town manager have gone to extreme measures to ensure the safety of Stoughton voters. Those people who want to vote, but realize they may be putting themselves at risk, can vote an absentee ballot. It's very easy to get one. You can download an application from the Secretary of State's office, fill it out, send it in to the clerk's office, and they will send you an absentee ballot. I have, I'm in that class, classification where I really have to shelter in place because of my age and a medical condition. I have requested an absentee ballot, and I'm hoping that everybody who may be concerned about their safety will ask for an absentee ballot. That way, they will be safe, because they can fill it out in their own home and mail it back to the town clerk's office. So I hope that you will stay with the June ninth date, and we can have our election. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion? All right, I'll, if hearing none, I'll call for a vote. On the motion to set the town election date for Tuesday, June nine, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kavy.
Um, we have to vote yes based on what I know right now, yes.
All right, I vote yes. Um, is there anything more on the, uh, town election, you know, town meeting? I don't hear anything. Um, hello?
Yeah, hello. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is David Lurie, Precinct Six. I just wanted to bring to your attention some information I came across, um, to the Finance Committee from the Division of Local Services. We were, um, we were looking at, like, how are towns working through the COVID situation with the budget? I think, uh, this kind of alludes to, uh, what my colleague and friend, uh, John Anzavino was referring to in terms of committing to a budget all the way through to the fall, when, you know, what measures could be taken to avoid that? And, um, what towns have been doing, based on the feedback we've gotten from the Division of Local Services, is that the mo- most, many of the towns are pushing their town meeting out to July or August just to make sure they know where they stand with revenue, so they're not making hasty decisions that cause for a major drop-off after being overextended until the fall. So I'm not saying anything in terms of what I think is, you know, going to be the right thing for Stoughton. I just thought it would be information that you'd find, um, important to, to at least understand what other towns are doing. It's kind of a blessing and a curse. I mean, it is a curse that we have to deal with the, the whole crisis, but the blessing is that we actually know about it, to be able to make decisions before setting a budget in the year that the financial crisis is going to hit us. So I just wanted to say, there is a method to be proactive that some towns are doing to avoid a major,
Yeah.
a major problem.
And to cut to the chase, the manager has urged us to not follow that course, and that's one of the things I'm trying to sort through. I don't want to disagree with the manager, but on the other hand, I don't want to be so far out, um, over, uh, o- overcommitted that the cuts we have to make will be worse. Uh, but the manager has expressed a desire that we not do what you're suggesting, and I'm not done yet figuring out, um, myself, and I think my other colleagues are in the same situation, based on our desire to get some better information. I also realize time is getting short to make that call. Um, anything else on, on the town meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Bob Mullin.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, uh, I'll just be quick. I just want to reach out and thank Gene Fleming for all the comments on the election and on town meeting. Thank you, Gene. Thank you all for letting me speak, thanks.
And, and, and thank you both for all you're doing.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, um, on the consent agenda, two items. A, uh, to pay, to meet payroll and, uh, bill warrants and any other documents that come before the meeting, and B, to approve open session minutes of April fifteen, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Mr. Kavy.
Yes.
Ms. Howe. Ms. Howe, are you there?
Yes, sorry, my microphone wouldn't...
All right. And, and, and I vote yes as well. Um, that concludes the open session agenda. The only item we have on executive session is minutes. If it's all right, I would just as soon take that up at our ne- at our next meeting, but we'll have a bit more to do. Um, so with that, is there a motion, uh, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So made.
All right, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Mr. Kavy.
Yes.
Ms. Howe.
Yes.
I vote yes, so thank you. Thanks again to all of the good citizens of the town for all we're doing to support one another, to the town employees, who dedication, uh, is just in- incredible, and I can say this based on calls I'm receiving from citizens and emails, uh, even an email I got today about a particular, uh, town employee. All you are doing for the town is being noticed. And with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May twelfth. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe and good night.
Thanks for setting the date.
Good night. Night.